Good evening. We will call the school board meeting to order. And if I could ask you all to please stand for the pledge of allegiance and sorry, the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. I'll ask Demetrius Phillips to come up to lead us in the invocation.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for who you are. And I just pray for every person in this room, every decision maker. I pray that you would give them wisdom far beyond their years. Give them a heart of understanding and eyes to see what needs to be seen. And we all will be careful to give you the glory for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Demetrius. And I'll now call Isabella Rosario to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Wait, Isabella, I have questions for you. How's it going? We just like to get to know the people who lead us in the pledge a little better. So I hear that you go to Bethune Academy. Is that correct?
Yes.
And what grade are you in?
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade. Man, so you're getting ready to go to middle school.
Yes.
Are you excited?
Yes.
Yes. So what is your favorite subject in school?
Uh, I think I really love reading. I all, I love to read books every day.
Nice. Do you have a favorite book?
Um, not really.
Whichever one you're, you're reading right now?
Uh, I'm reading a book called PAX. It's about a fox that had an owner named, um, um, the owner was named Jim and he's a child and his father went into the military. So he had to leave Fox into the wild and he's trying to find, um, he's trying to find him.
How nice. Well, I hope he finds him. You'll have to come back and let us know how that one ends. And so what, do you know what you want to be when you grow up?
Um, I want to be an interior designer.
Very nice. I like that. So I take it you're creative.
Yes.
Very cool. Well, and I hear you have a dog. Can you tell us a little bit about your dog?
So my dog is named Teddy. He's about to turn four in June. Uh, we got him when I was seven years old and I play with him a lot.
That's awesome. Well, thank you so much for leading us in the pledge today. Do you have your friends or family here to support you?
Yes.
Can you introduce us?
Um, my mom, my dad, and my sister.
Very nice. Awesome. Well, thank you all so much for bringing Isabella out here. And Isabella, thank you for leading us in the pledge. All right. So the first order of business on our agenda will be to accept the school board agenda. Superintendent Hyde, do we have any revisions?
We do, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, item F number one, new administrators, description and an attachment was added. Item G number one, budget and staffing, we updated the attachments. Item L five, staffing updates, learning support from consent to action, was moved from consent to action and created two motions under it. Item P, as in Paul number one, purchase of insignia software corporation, was moved from consent to action. Item Q five, resolutions to amend district school budget twenty twen- twenty thousand, two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three. January was moved to action item for consent agenda. It's been a long day. Item T number one, attorney's report, description was updated and attachment was added. Madam Chair, that concludes any changes or revisions to the board meeting for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. I'll now hear a motion to accept the March 28th, 2023 school board agenda as revised.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the March 28th, 2023 school board agenda with the revisions as noted.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Fields. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. All right. Next, we will have our special recognitions, Superintendent Hyde. I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah. And once again, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of staff, community, thank you for being here this evening. At this time, I'd like to ask school board member, Mr. Rick Nolte, to please step down to participate in this evening's special recognitions. As Mr. Nolte makes his way down, I'd also like to invite Ms. Yumini Barian, Senior Director of School Improvement, to please come forward to recognize Crystal Lake Elementary School for becoming a University of Central Florida certified community partnership school. Ms. Barian.
Good afternoon, Board and Superintendent Hyde. My name again is Yumini Barian. I'm the Senior Director for School Improvement, um, directly supporting Crystal Lake Elementary. I stand before you on behalf of Mrs. Barnes in her absence as she is out of town. I have the privilege to present this item before the board this evening. Uh, Crystal Lake Elementary is celebrating again a major milestone after becoming a UCF certified community partnership school. The certi- certification demonstrates Crystal Lake Elementary's commitment to providing high-quality programs and upholding core components of the community partnership schools model. Please welcome Timothy Warren, Principal of Crystal Lake Elementary School, and Andrea Hagan, Director of Community Partnership Schools, Heartland for Children at Crystal Lake Elementary.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Hyde, members of the school board, and Ms. Barian, thank you so much for that introduction. It is a pleasure for myself and our principal, Mr. Warren, to be here this evening to, in support of this recognition, and to be the very first community partnership school, a UCF certified community partnership school in Polk County. And I say first because I hope there's more to come. This did not, we did not get here on our own. This took a community to come together. Core partners such as Polk County Public Schools, Central Florida Healthcare, Heartland for Children, United Way of Central Florida, Southeastern University, and the leadership of Polk Vision to initially begin this back in 2017. In 2018, 2019, school year was our first year opening our doors as a community partnership school model. And I'm very proud to say that within four years, we were able to achieve certification. We are only one of 15 schools in the state of Florida that has achieved this accomplishment. And there are currently 36 community partnership schools throughout the state of Florida. We are a legislatively funded and approved program with the support of our representatives and senators up in Tallahassee. But we would be remiss to say that we're anything without our community stakeholders, our teachers, our school staff support, our parents, the students that show up every day, and our community providers as well as our community members. We have many, many, many providers that support our programs on the campus. Within our campus, we are able to offer healthcare through an onsite community health center. We are able to provide food supports. We're able to provide enrichment programs such as tutoring and after-school programs such as Girl Scouts and Cub Scouts, dance, media, a variety of opportunities that our students, our children in the Crystal Lake community may not otherwise have the opportunity to participate in. And all of this at no cost to our families and to their students. An example would be this weekend, we have six girls that are going for their very first Girl Scout camp. We had a spring fling this past weekend with over 270 people on campus with 12 different partners coming together to ensure that it was a huge and fun event for our families and, and the community at large. When I mentioned our community health center, just since July of this year, we have had over 1,900 individuals provided primary, primary healthcare. As part of that partnership and the George W. Jenkins End Hunger Initiative through United Way, we have had over five, that 5,800 individuals receive food through a first and third week food distribution. We have 66 students so far this school year that have received weekend food supports. And we have 324 of our 421 students engaged in one of our expanded learning programs, enrichment or tutoring. These are opportunities again that without the support of you all, first our superintendent and his drive and initiatives for wellness and health in our community, and you all in supporting this as our, as our board members, Dr. Allen for your support coming out to our school. And without the leadership of our principal, we would not be able to achieve what we've achieved in this short time. And there was this little thing called COVID that impacted two of our four years. And did I mention again, we were certified in four. It typically takes five. So on that, I just want to express our gratitude, the gratitude to our partners that are here with us tonight and to our parents and our students and community members at Crystal Lake who show up every day to keep trying to strive harder and to be better and to continue to move towards success, a lifelong success, not just for elementary school, but middle school, high school, and beyond. And with that, I would ask Mr. Warren to say a few things.
Good evening, Superintendent Hyde, Board. Uh, one of the things I, I would really like to say is that having the community partnership school at Crystal Lake means so much. Uh, sometimes people like to think that communities are not involved, there's not help. Uh, our parents know if they need food, clothing, transportation, help with anything, all they need to do is say, I need help. And we will put them in touch with the resources to help them, their child. Like Mrs. Hagan mentioned, kids that get injured, kids that need healthcare, um, clothing, whatever the need is, we are there. And the community partnership does an outstanding job there. Uh, some might be familiar with a full-service school. This is bigger than a full-service school. It is the entire community coming together for the school and for the students. So I'm just really grateful for the outstanding support that we get through the community partnership. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if we could ask those that are our core partners to come down for a picture?
You may need two levels.
Mr. Nolte, no. You're, you're stuck there, sir, for a few minutes. Next, I'd like to invite Jeanette Crowley, Director of Strategic Planning and Partnerships, who will recognize our Focus on Excellence winners. Just walking, just walks over to take the picture.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde, Madam Chair, and school board members. Um, I'm excited to be here with all of you tonight as well as our community. Um, I have the privilege of recognizing our Focus on Excellence winners and honoring the employees within, uh, the classroom teacher and 12-month teacher positions. Focus on Excellence is a year-long campaign to spotlight the important contributions of all Polk County Public School employees. Each quarter, the program will set nominations for a different group of employees and a committee will select the winners to receive prizes from our generous sponsors, as well as attend a special appreciation luncheon, as well as being recognized here at a school board meeting and highlighted on the district's social media sites. This year, we increased the number of our winners selected to 10 employees per quarter. Over the course of the year, we will recognize and spotlight 40 employees. I truly do know that this program is making an impact on our employees. I just recently received numerous feedback from a lot of individuals because we, we just announced our winners and recognized the nominees, um, through this, um, these positions. Um, and I wanted to share one piece of, um, recog- uh, feedback that I received from one of our nominees. They said they went to their box today at school and found a Focus on Excellence award package. Thank you. You have no idea what this means to me right now. It has been a hard year and it's getting harder. And I have questioned often if what I was doing was worth it. I really appreciate the encouragement. So sometimes it only takes just a little special gift, a little kindness and support, a little thank you, that goes a long way of encouragement for our employees. Last week, we hosted an appreciation luncheon at the Club at Eagle Brook, which is one of our program sponsors, for our winners along with each winner's supervisor, district leadership, and program sponsors. All winners received a prize package valued at approximately $700, courtesy of our partners. The package include, for each of the winners includes PCPS logoed and keepsake items along with a special student-created vase award. And the beautiful vase is a custom etched, um, vase that's from the students at Gauze Academy. They also receive, um, gifts from Chick-fil-A, Hand and Stone and Massage and Facial Spa, IDX formerly Image Depot, Lakeland Magic, Sign Gypsies, Rhino Smash Sauce Company. And then we have our, um, sponsors that provide a monetary support for our program, which include Mid-Florida Credit Union, Public Supermarkets Inc., Mosaic, and CPS Investment Advisors, along with Dixie Southern Industrial, Inc. I can't thank these business partners enough who constantly support the work of our school district and who have graciously come alongside us making this campaign successful. Due to their financial support, we're also able to give every PCPS employee who is nominated through this program a special gift as well. So it's my pleasure to introduce our winners for the Focus on Excellence program through our classroom teacher and 12-month teacher positions. We're ready. Yep. All right. Our first teacher is Casey Rakes. Casey is a band teacher at Lake Alfred Polytech Academy. And what Casey loves most about her, um, the work she does for Polk County Public Schools and her job is that she gets to teach music to students every day. She gets to see them grow as young musicians over three years and help them prepare to continue with music in high school. She grew up in Polk County Public Schools and she loves that she gets to inspire students in the same place that inspired her. And I want to say thank you and congratulations to Casey Rakes. Our next winner is Odili Perez, who is an ESOL teacher at Garner Elementary. What Ms. Perez loves most about, um, what she does for Polk County Public Schools is making a difference and positive contribution in a student's life. She loves seeing the potential in her students, especially when they maximize that potential. She's reminded of the power of education. She says it's incredibly rewarding and inspiring to see a student blossom and grow academically and as a citizen, particularly those who are emerging bilingual speakers. Ultimately, when a student's desire to learn is ignited, a world of possibilities is open to them. And that is why she's passionate, passionate about teaching in Polk County Public Schools. The other aspect of her job that she loves is building meaningful relationships with families and being a liaison between her students' families and our school community. Family engagement is pivotal to our students' success and to changing the overall culture of the community. Hence why she loves fostering family engagement, embracing and celebrating our families' cultures, richness, and diversity, and supporting them and their students. This is precisely why she loves working for Polk County Public Schools because it's committed to serving our diverse, growing, evolving student population and community. PCPS offers endless opportunities to have an impact and make a difference in the community and students' lives. Congratulations. Not with us tonight, but our, our next winner is Pia Ballard. She's a fifth-grade teacher at Pine Wood Elementary. Uh, she loves being able to make a difference in a child's life. The moment they catch on to a new concept and they gain confidence in themselves is the most rewarding part. So I want to say congratulations to Ms. Ballard. Ms. Patricia McKinnon, who is a math teacher at Citrus Ridge Civics Academy, is with us next. And she says that she has the pleasure of working for Polk County Public next. And she says that she has the pleasure of working for Polk County Public Schools since 1994. Congratulations. She says the students are the most important reason she has enjoyed working in Polk County Public Schools. It's an honor to teach many students. She's been able to see some of the students as young adults. It's very rewarding for her to see students after she's taught them and when they've gotten older. Some remember being in her class, some remember her as a secretary in the office. Still, she says that some of her current students tell her she's their favorite teacher. She's most proud to be remembered by some of her former students. She says that it's been a pleasure and blessed part to be a part of Polk County Public Schools. The wonderful people she's met and the opportunity to work and know that she's making a difference in the lives of students are experiences that you can't put a price tag. Thank you and congratulations. All right. We have Shelley Hayes, who's a kindergarten teacher at Frostproof Ben Hill Griffin Jr. Elementary. What she loves about working in Polk County Public Schools is that she gets to work in the town and give back to the community that she grew up in and went to school at. She gets the opportunity to work alongside teachers who taught her in school, which she says is priceless. She loves the relationships she forms with her students and watching them grow and become independent thinkers. Congratulations. Courtney Detloff. Courtney is a 2nd-grade teacher at Horizons Elementary. What Courtney loves about her job is that she gets to come to work and help students reach their goals. She loves being a part of their educational journey and trying to inspire and lead them to success. She couldn't do this without her amazing and wonderful administration, fellow teachers, and support staff through Polk County Public Schools. She feels blessed and honored to work alongside this tremendous school, Horizons Elementary, and she appreciates everything that's given to her. Congratulations. All right. Our next winner is Kendra Moxon, who is a language arts teacher at Lake Gibson Senior High. Polk County Public Schools is an extremely accepting school district. From the moment she was hired, she felt included and welcomed. She's been able to grow as an educator professionally and personally. The opportunities that are given by this school district allow teachers and students to expand their reaches and do better in the world. Congratulations. All right. Our next winner is Ashley Roberts, who's a 5th-grade teacher at Lewis Anna Woodbury Elementary. I would also like to say, in addition to being a teacher, she is a brand-new mom as well. So I want to say congratulations as well on becoming a mother. She is honored to work for Polk County Public Schools and have the opportunity to impact future generations. She loves empowering students to take risks in the classroom and reach their full potential. Congratulations. Our next winner is Alyssa Lemkul, who is an ESE teacher at Gene Odell Learning Center. Alyssa has lived, learned, and grown up here in Polk County. Her passion for working with students with special needs initiated at a young age. She knew that this was her future career path. She loves working for Polk County Public Schools because she can build relationships with students and their families here in the place that she loves, Polk County. She loves working at Gene Odell Learning Center. Her school is such a special place full of love and learning, and she is surrounded by the most amazing students and staff who truly put their heart and soul into making each day shine. Congratulations.
Is that her family? Bring them down and get a picture. Come on, family. Don't hide in the back. Come on down. You got to walk out this way anyways, so.
Erica Smith is our next winner, who is a 2nd-grade teacher at Lake Alfred Elementary. What Erica said that she loves most about her job is instructing learners is the most rewarding part of her day. She truly does enjoy seeing the growth academically, as well as the students develop socially. She is grateful that Polk County Public Schools recognizes employees as a way to say, "We see you, and we appreciate your efforts." What she loves most about working for Polk County Public Schools is that we are provided with many opportunities to grow professionally. Thank you and congratulations. All right. That concludes our winners for tonight, and I just want to say congratulations to each of them again. They're certainly deserving of the spotlight. In the future weeks, we will highlight them on Fridays. It's called Focus Fridays, so the community will also learn more about them. If anybody would like to know more about our Focus on Excellence program, anybody in the audience, you're more than welcome to visit polkschoolsfl.com/excellence to learn more. Thank you.
This time, Carrie Brown, Head of Program at Bartow, will come down to be recognized. She's here this evening to recognize Bartow High School's construction program.
Yes, good evening. I am Carrie Brown, Head of Program. I have with me Dr. Clemmons, our school principal. The Bartow High School Future Builders Association Club, representing the ACE Academy at our school, recently competed in a competition out in Las Vegas at a National Home Builders Association competition. With nearly 100 students competing from post-secondary and secondary levels, I can tell you that I am very proud of our students here with me tonight. First, though, I would like to thank our business partners because without them, our students would not have been so well-prepared for their competition. So I would like to bring forward Mike Hickman from Hickman Homes, sorry, Danny Adams from Highlands Homes, Laura Simpson is with Crown Electric, and we also have with us Mr. Dennis Sparks from the Polk County Builders Association. So I wouldn't want to not have a moment to represent and thank these people with us tonight. So please join me in thanking them. All right. At this time, I would like to bring up our national champs. They took home first place in this competition, very first time competing, Mr. Jimmy Giles, our academy instructor. Come on forward. He's got the big trophy. We have Mr. Porter Brown. He is carrying their first-place trophy. We have Mr. Simon Durham. Jamie Rulo. And Jordan Simpson. Thank you very much. Congratulations to them all.
So we're going to take a couple photos, so if you all just stay there after this photo, please. Can we get our community sponsors to please join them, along with their principal? Soon-to-be-retired principal? Thank you. Lastly, I'd like to ask Andrea Hagan, Director of Community Partnership Schools, Heartland for Children, to please come forward to receive the Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation. Mr. Sharpless will read the proclamation aloud.
Whereas Florida is committed to improving the lives of all Floridians and securing a better future for the citizens of this state, and whereas children who have adverse childhood experiences are at a higher risk of short and long-term physical, psychological, and behavioral challenges that can impact the individual child and the greater community, and whereas parents and caregivers who have resources and support are better equipped to give their children safe and nurturing experiences, and whereas children have better mental health and physical health and academic success when they are raised in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment, and whereas the Florida Department of Children and Families Secretary has a vision for holistic services by integrating systems and services, and whereas the state of Florida has established HOPE Florida, a pathway to prosperity, a personalized approach to helping families overcome barriers to self-sufficiency through community collaboration, and whereas Floridians can call 850-300-HOPE to speak with a care navigator for support to develop a plan to achieve economic self-sufficiency, referrals to local partners, and help identifying goals and barriers in their lives, and whereas during the month of April, Prevent Child Abuse Florida, in collaboration with the Governor's Office of Adoption and Child Protection, the Florida Department of Children and Families, and the Ounce of Prevention Fund of Florida, implements Pin Wheels for Prevention, a statewide coordinated campaign to raise awareness of child abuse prevention efforts by teaching about healthy child development and positive parenting practices, and establishing circle of parents' peer support groups, and whereas Child Abuse Prevention Month provides everyone a chance to learn how they can play a role in preventing abuse and neglect, including adverse childhood experiences, and whereas Child Abuse Prevention Month reminds Floridians of all ages that they can help children increase positive childhood experiences, which lead to happier, healthier childhoods. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of Polk County, Florida, do hereby extend my support to all observing April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Florida, dated this 28th day of March 2023.
Thank you, Member Sharpless. I'm so sorry. Fellow members, Superintendent Hyde, we want to thank you for proclaiming April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We appreciate the involvement of Polk County in the Pin Wheels for Prevention campaign each year, and we're delighted to see the many parts of our city and cities throughout Polk County that display the pinwheels through gardens and activities involving our children, the municipalities that support this, and talk about what we can all do to strengthen families and keep children safe. Pin Wheels for Prevention uses a simple child's toy. Each of you has one, a pinwheel, a blue and silver pinwheel to remind us that all children deserve the right to have happy, healthy, safe childhoods, and the vital role that each of you and each of us in our community play to ensuring the safety of our children. Heartland for Children is proud to be the lead community-based care agency under the Department of Children and Families, and we are passionate about child safety and strengthening families through the services and resources we offer. To give you a better understanding of the children we serve, the total number of children with open child welfare cases through Polk, Highlands, and Hardy Counties as of March 20, 2023 totaled 2,085 children. The total number of children removed from homes in the tri-county area due to abuse or neglect last fiscal year totaled 656. The total number of children removed in the tri-county area due to abuse and neglect so far this year is 469. The total current of traditional foster homes in this area is 191, and I would be remiss to say that our greatest need is quality foster homes for children in need. Out of that, the total number of foster homes, that number of 191, 180 of them exist in Polk County. For the fiscal year 2122, 233 children were able to be placed in their forever homes and adopted through Circuit 10. We are currently on track to reach at least that number this year, with over 109 children currently being placed and secured in forever homes. For those that may be interested, please visit our adoption gallery at Heartland for Children's website for more information on how you too could be an adoptive parent. During the month of April, we encourage you and the others here with us today to display pinwheels and share information with others through conversations, through social media, about child abuse prevention. We ask that you wear your blue lapel pin and the pinwheel provided to you to help raise awareness. We want our community to understand that while the task is daunting and the numbers can be scary, we understand that together, we can have a huge positive impact on all of the children in our county. We are stronger together. Thank you again for your commitment to the children and families in Polk County. And if I may invite our Heartland for Children Prevention staff and others in support to come down for the photo?
Please. Thank you, Ms. Nolte. Madam Chair, at this time, this concludes our special recognitions for this evening.
Thank you Superintendent Hyde. The next item on our agenda is public comments for items on the agenda to be voted upon as adopted at the start of this meeting. Before we begin, I would like to welcome the public and go over our public comment process and opportunities for this evening. We will have two opportunities for public comment. The first will be for items on this evening's agenda to be voted upon. Then, at the end of the meeting, we will have an additional opportunity for public comment on items that are not on this evening's agenda. To register to speak, community members must fill out a speaker card in the lobby prior to the meeting. All speakers will be given three minutes. The light will turn yellow when you have one minute. The light will turn yellow when you have one minute left, and you will hear a beep when your time is concluded. All comments should be directed to myself as the board chair. As a reminder, public comments are an opportunity for us to hear your thoughts and comments. This is not a question and answer session. However, if you are seeking additional information, I encourage you to contact any of us or the superintendent's office outside of board meetings, and we would be happy to have deeper conversations. So I will call the first person, then I'll also call on deck because I know we have some watching in the overflow room. So the first person will go up to the podium. The on-deck person, there's a pretty red line and tape on the floor just behind the podium, so you will go and stand on that line when you are on deck. So first, we will have Paulette, and I'm not sure if it's Dapper or Napper. And then second, we will have on-deck Stephanie Williams. And if you could please state your name for the record before you begin speaking as well.
Paulette Napper.
Thank you, just to make sure I got it right.
Good evening. I am here on behalf of the Language and Literacy Learning Academy. I would like to point out that one in every 59 children has a learning disability in the United States. One in five have ADHD dyslexia. 2.8 million children are getting service in the United States. Four million children younger than 18 now have learning disabilities. We in Polk need LLAC at school. Our community needs LLAC. Our community needs to not stagnate its growth, but we need to continue to assist each other in unity for the growth of this school. It has a place in our community. We have now created it, let's help it grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie Williams will be next, and on deck will be Audra Leonard. And again, if you could just state your name for the record as we start.
Good evening, and I'm nervous. My name is Stephanie Williams. I am here on behalf of Language and Literacy Academy. I am the supportive three teacher. I came to speak because in reference to Language and Literacy Academy, my classroom and specifically was actually addressed in some of your concerns that you have. So I just wanted to come this evening to actually speak upon that. First of all, I would just like to say, for those of you who are not aware of Language and Literacy Academy, Language and Literacy Academy is more than just a school for a lot of us. And I say "us" because I would like to include the family members, the staff, as well as the students. We are a family. For some of these students, Language and Literacy Academy is not only a school where they come to learn, but it's also their safe haven. It's their sanctuary, it's a refuge. Because we service a lot of children who come from broken families, broken homes. A lot of these children have gone through a lot of trauma. Some of the staff have gone through some trauma. So I would just like to point that out to you that upon your consideration, do understand that whatever your decision is, is that you're not only affecting the school, you're affecting the community, and you're affecting children, staff, and family. I would like to touch a little bit on the curriculum in my classroom. We do have a modified curriculum in the classroom through the Unique Learning System. In my classroom specifically, I do have the honor of having two pairs in my classroom. My classroom, it was, the comment was made that I'm teaching more than one subject in my classroom, several different subjects to several different grade levels. You would have to take a good look at the curriculum to understand that. My classroom is broken down into different groups according, not only to their age, but also their grade levels and their learning abilities, because as you all know, children do learn in different levels. The pros and cons, real quick. There are no cons of closing the center, it's more you need to keep it open for the pros because this is a last stop for some of our children. It's a last stop for some of our teachers as well. If you close our facility, where are these children gonna go? Because the one thing that some of you don't want to talk about is that public schools do not want to have to deal with some of the behaviors that these children are having to deal with on a daily basis. So I just wanted to point these things out to you. And again, we are more than just a facility, we are a family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. I have Audra Leonard, and then on deck is Clayton Coward.
Hello. I am Audra Leonard. I'm actually wanting to speak on behalf of Language and Literacy Academy. I'm an ESC co-teacher here at this school. I've actually worked under the Polk County school system as well, before actually working here at Language and Literacy. I worked as an ESC paraprofessional for 18 years. Love the job, love the kids. I'm also a single parent of autistic kid as well. And would like to state the need to stay with Language and Literacy for these kids because they need us. As I stand here, no one can understand the hardships of a disabled child like myself, being both, on both ends as a parent as well as a teacher. There have been some mornings I have to deal with my own child where she has had her rages three or four o'clock in the morning where she may possibly run out. And I have to calm her down before I'm able to go to my job and help out my students that also need me. I've actually, the students that I have is labeled as my supportive two class. I've actually been at this school for six months. I have 18 students that vary in autism and ADHD, with five of my students being nonverbal. For me, working with disabled students, I believe in setting goals to see the progression, and that is what we have done in our class. One of my nonverbal students now talks and give full class participation, which I applaud myself as well as the two pairs that work in the class with me. I have another student that was stated to be very disruptive with loud noises that are sustained within, as a challenge to everyone where no one could actually stand the noise that he makes continuously all day. So my challenge with him was to give him work that was clearly at a higher level than what he was, which actually calms him down to think as a challenge, I must do this. This is not at my level, I really can't do this, but I'm not gonna let this beat me. So this was his progress to stay quiet. He wanted to win as well as me wanting him to win. He's actually calmed down, we don't actually hear that as much as it used to be. Some of these students are required to be changed as in that we're wearing Depends pull-ups. One of my students now, I've actually worked with the parents and actually asking, can you please at home stop this student? And that has changed, and that's the progression.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard. Clayton Coward, and on deck is Siobhan Daniels.
My comments are very brief. We just want to make sure that the same recommendation and standards that are held for this school is consistent with all other charter schools in this same, in this area. So we just want to make sure that it's consistent because as we're looking at some of the information that we receive, there seems to be some differences. We just want to make sure it's the same standard across the board. Thank you.
Thank you, and just for the record, it was Clayton Coward, that was correct? Okay, thank you. Siobhan Daniels, and then on deck I have Zelda V. Abrams.
Good evening. I am Siobhan Daniels. I'm the instructional coach at Language and Literacy Academy for Learning. Various project-based learning options have been shown to increase student achievement in inclusive classrooms. Students can design projects, learning pathways, and tasks according to their needs and interests using project-based approach. Each class created and published a book through the Student Treasury Publishing Company during this school year, project-based learning. The class book I would like to show you and share with you today is an example from our fourth grade classroom titled, "I Am More Than What You See." This classroom dynamics is 50% OHI, 25% SLD, and 25% EBD. Throughout the project-based initiative, the students demonstrate collaboration, community partnerships, public presentations, inter proficiency, and learning standards. For an example, ELA 4.C 1.4 approving writing by planning, revising, editing, and guidance and support from adults and feedback from peers. As part of the project-based learning opportunities, students presented, published books by our first Meet the Author Family Night. This event allowed parents and students to meet local children book authors. In addition to establishing partnerships with local authors, this event increased our parental involvement from 15% to 46%. Our school project-based opportunity enhances our student educational and cultural experiences. As a result, Language and Literacy Academy for Learning has positively impacted our students, staff, and community on culture and educational levels. Yes, we have a beautiful playground. And yes, we are in the heart of Winter Haven, Florida. However, this has also implemented, we also implemented the resources, tools necessary to enhance and impact our students, staff, and community. So as you review and debrief your discussion today, please remember how Language and Literacy Academy for Learning has been and will continue to help students rise above educational barriers.
Thank you. Next is Zelda Abram, and on deck is Ken Tinkler.
Hi, good evening Superintendent Hyde, Madam Chairman, and School Board members. My name is Zelda Abram. I'm here to speak on behalf of Language and Literacy Academy for Learning. In the summer of 2022, I was contacted and asked if I would consider serving on the Board of Language and Literacy Academy for Learning. I, after learning from Dr. Callens, the unique population that the school serves, I thought it was a privilege and an honor to be able to advocate on behalf of those students. I do want to share that both of my children attended school in Polk County, and their experiences were very different. My daughter graduated as a salutatorian from Harrison School of the Arts, and my son with honors from McHale Academy. Although they were both successful, their journeys were both very different. As parents, we had to pay attention a little more, actually a lot more, and work just a little harder to ensure that our son had what he needed to be successful. Why do I share this? Because they came from the same household, same parents, but a completely different experience. But what we realized is that he needed somebody to advocate on his behalf. After attending several board meetings at Language and Literacy Academy, I realized the care and compassion the board and the staff have for the school, and more importantly, the students. Dr. Callens passionately knows every parent and student, every staff member, and every staff member and teacher knows each student. I've sat on other school-related boards and know the challenges that they face. Imagine that challenge multiplied by the fact that our students all have a special and unique need. Language and Literacy Academy for Learning serves a unique purpose, one that may not be cut out for just anyone. Today, I feel strongly that Dr. Callens and staff are committed to create a proactive and enriching environment, open-minded to make corrections and adjustments swiftly, but more importantly, committed to advocate and create a learning environment for a unique student body. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Tinkler, and on deck is Dr. Tandrea Callens.
Good evening, Board members. I'm Ken Tinkler with the Carlton Fields Law Firm, representing Language and Literacy Academy for Learning. I wanted to first check, as I hadn't heard back from the superintendent, have all of you received my handout I had sent? Otherwise I have extras? Okay, wonderful. I'm not gonna read all of this to you, obviously, in three minutes, but I wanted to make sure you had the highlights that came from both Dr. Callens's submittals to the school district as well as my colleague Stacy Sutton's letter from back in February, which covered most of this. A one-year renewal that is proposed in the agenda is absurd. It sets up this school for failure. Parents will begin to withdraw their students, staff will begin to leave, there'll be a cloud of uncertainty that is put around this school. This is the very reason why a brand-new charter school gets five years. You want to have certainty in this process. State law is clear that any school with less than a B grade gets five years. The idea that an ESC school serving the students who need those services would get any less is also absurd. We have a doctrine in the law called the absurdity doctrine. It's so rare in Florida to see it come into action, but that's the path you're on. You're interpreting the law in a way that harms special education children. And I see the slogan below here, "Students First." How could you possibly want to put an ESC school in that kind of circumstance? We've outlined responses and actions that the school has taken in dealing with the concerns raised by the superintendent. The Language and Literacy Academy wants this to be a collaborative process. And what you're hearing tonight, if the charter review process you have is missing all of the comments that you're hearing tonight, I would put forward that it's deeply flawed. I think you're missing the heart of the focus on students and the idea that a charter should not be something that's used as a weapon. The charter should be the base foundation, the base contract that is used with the district. The district has tremendous power under the law to step in and to end a charter relationship should something happen during that charter period. This is not a circumstance where you should put anyone on a year-to-year. The school has solved their location issues going forward. The financial issues have been addressed. What we would ask you to do is to look at your responsibility as School Board members. You should be focused upon the students. You should be focused upon creating a stable atmosphere for this school. And we would ask that you grant this school a 15-year term, as is within your power, but five years is the bare minimum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tinkler. Dr. Callens, and on deck is Tricia Blum.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Hyde, and Polk County School Board members. I want to acknowledge the work of the Charter Review Team in providing their feedback to Language and Literacy Academy for Learning. I'm not the type of person that shies away from learning more effective ways to improve our school. When I stood before the School Board seven years ago, I remember distinctly, Ms. Cunningham, that you said to me that the Winter Haven community needs this school. And that hasn't changed. And that hasn't changed. It's even more true now than it was six years ago. I took your feedback along with Ms. K. Fields at that time and the other school, school board members. If you remember, the charter applications were due in October in that first year. The next year it changed to February. So I had four months to restructure and reorganize a completely different school and charter. And we did that together. Two years later, we were approved and Language and Literacy Academy for Learning was born. I have taken the concerns of the Charter Review Team and the School Board Members and have addressed all of their concerns. Within 30 days, I responded to the concerns immediately after the work session on February 14th, the 15th, and the 16th. I asked the Director of Charter Schools to share my responses to the Polk County School Board Members and the Superintendent and the Charter Review Team. My attorney sent a formal letter to Superintendent and Mr. West Bridges via email and through certified mail on February 22nd, justifying our request for the 15 years. I have provided you with written talking points and you will, you have already heard and you will continue to hear from our parents, our staff, and our community on why Language and Literacy Academy is critical to this community. I am asking on behalf of the nearly 300 families that we serve and the 80 staff members that you reconsider your approval and recommendation for one year and at least approve for the minimum of five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Callens. Trisha Blum and on deck is Jonathan Hilliard.
Hi, I'm Trisha Blum. Good evening esteemed Board, Madam Chair, and Superintendent Hyde. As I said a moment ago, my name is Trisha Blum and I am the Vice President of Business Services at Charter School Capital. I support schools on important business matters by providing strategic advice, business consulting, and bespoke coaching and capacity building. I have served over 56 schools since I started at Charter School Capital six years ago. Prior to joining CSC, I was the CEO of a five-campus charter school. Charter School Capital was founded in support of public charter schools. Our vision is every child should have access to a nurturing school environment where they can flourish, like Language and Literacy. We provide money to schools so they can operate. We provide money to schools so they can buy their forever homes. And we fill schools with kiddos through our enrollment marketing services. Since CSC's inception, some 14 years ago, we've invested over $2.1 billion in charter schools. Language and Literacy is one of 800 schools we have served, and I am proud to say we have served over 1.2 million students across 44 states. I have had the honor of working with Dr. Callens and her leadership team since 2019. I do not say this lightly. Her leadership, commitment to her students, staff, and the community is beyond compare. Dr. Callens and her team have the capacity and the strength to continue to shepherd the program at Language and Literacy for as long as we allow it. As I mentioned earlier, CSC provides money to schools so schools can purchase their forever homes. Language and Literacy has recently located a perfect building to house their school in the same area they are currently located. CSC has negotiated with the seller and the Language and Literacy Board has approved the purchase. CSC is prepared to move forward with a purchase and sale agreement but cannot do such until Language and Literacy's charter is renewed. To that end, I kindly request that you, the Board, grant Language and Literacy at least a five-year renewal and preferably a 15-year renewal. Thank you.
Jonathan Hilliard and on deck is Calvin Callens.
Good evening. To the Chair, to the Board, and to Superintendent Hyde. I want to address the issue of providing therapy services and filling vacant positions at Language and Literacy. According to an article published on March 20th, 2023, creating new positions is not the same as filling them, and Board Members acknowledge that the district has struggled to fill vacancies. The district, like most others throughout Florida, has had a difficult time filling ESE positions. The district currently has 27 openings, including for an occupational therapist and physical therapist, three ESE pre-K teachers, a hearing teacher, a varying exceptionality teacher, and 16 openings for ESE paraeducators. The district has been forced to hire teachers out of area, meaning they are licensed to teach but are not certified to teach special education. For instance, parents of students at Doris Sanders Learning Center, one of several center schools that educate some of the most profoundly disabled students in the district, recently received a letter home informing them that multiple teachers at the school are out of area. Why is Language and Literacy being singled out and targeted for not filling positions and having teachers out of area when the district is experiencing the same issues? Language and Literacy does not have a problem with providing ESE services to their students. Language and Literacy has speech lang, and language pathologists and speech-language pathologist assistants, occupational therapists and assistants, physical therapists and assistants, board-certified behavior therapists, registered behavior techs, mental health therapists, a social worker, and two ESE facilitators. Language and Literacy provides a continuum of services at home with hospital homebound students. If Language and Literacy is servicing 290 students, all with IEPs without gaps in service, why would you only approve Language and Literacy for one year? According to our Superintendent Hyde, his own statements, the district cannot serve these students. My question to you, where will they go?
Calvin Callens and on deck is Bernard Wells.
Thank you so much, Dr. Calvin, E. Callen Sr. Just have a couple of questions, and I know you can't answer, but just want you to think. Did you know on the 14th of last month, you got the response that you was looking for and the corrections that you was looking for? Did you know that people are playing games with paperwork you should have received about language and literacy? Did you know even on yesterday, my wife was sent an email, she was asking about her check, and someone in the departments are playing games and say they believe they sent a check at an address, not that they know where they sent the address? With that response, did you know I had to take my wife to the emergency room, threatening stroke symptoms and a heart attack because someone in your department are playing games? Well, now that you know, what are we going to do? What are we going to do with the information that we're receiving tonight? What will we do with all of the comments? Will we stand up? Because now, we all know.
Thank you. Bernard Wells and on deck is Jeanette Hilton.
Greetings to each of you. I will be speaking from, my name is Bernard Wells, and I will be speaking to our general item L5, Staffing Updates. The Position Director ESE Instruction does not exist on the current, does not currently exist as a position. It is presented on this chart as though it already exists. It is not listed as a new position or even a change in position on this chart. It is shown in green as though it is currently a funded position. Also, there is not currently a job description for this position. If one looks at the current organization chart for ESE, this position does not have, this position is not on that current chart. Where does this position come from? Why is there no job description for this position? If the Board has previously approved this position, when did that occur? For the Assistant Director position listed on the new chart, there were two Assistant Director position approved in May of '22. Why is one elevated over the other in position? The two positions that were approved in May of '22 were Assistant Director of Transition, Assistant Director of Hospital Homebound. The Assistant Director Hospital Homebound is still listed as such on the new chart, but the Assistant Director of Transition is not listed on the new chart at all. Also, the way the Assistant Director position is demonstrated on the new chart, it appears as though this position is elevated in authority over the Assistant Director of Hospital Homebound. Since these Assistant Director position were both created as equal positions in May of '22, why are they not still presented as they were back then, May of '22? Where is the Assistant Director of Transition position gone? Under the Educational Diagnostic position on the new organization chart, there is a change from TRST Program Specialist 11-month. The word pre-K is crossed out. It says the reporting change is from Senior Manager pre-K to Director ESE Instruction. Does this mean that the Senior Manager pre-K position currently exists as your new organization chart implies? If so, why hasn't this position been filled this current school year? Wouldn't that begin to explain all of the issues and problems in pre-K since there hasn't been a Senior Manager overseeing this department? Why hasn't this leadership even attempted to fill the vacancy during this school year, knowing the many problems occurring in ESE pre-K? On the proposed organization chart, it mentions reporting change of TRST Program 11-month position. The word transition is crossed out. It began reporting the change is from Senior Manager Transition to Director ESE Instruction. Does this mean that the Senior Manager Transition position exists as your chart implies? Again, where is the Senior Director position of transition?
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Just as a reminder, Board Members, that was the item that was moved to the Action Agenda. So if you're looking for it in L, it is no longer there. It'll be at the Action. We'll have Jeanette Hilton and on deck is Marquesha Smith.
Hello, my name is Jeanette Hilton. My daughter, Annika, has been going to Language and Literacy Academy since pre-K. She is now in second grade. My daughter from the outside looks like a normal little girl. However, she suffers from many diagnoses, including learning disabilities. When she was two years old, I started researching schools. I told my husband, who has now passed away, that we will take her to the best school for her, even if we had to move. When she started pre-K at Language and Literacy, we lived in North Lakeland. Thanks to the McKay Scholarship, we were able to place her in a school an hour away. Polk County does not offer a lot of schools for only special needs kids. When I called the Karen M. Segal Academy, the child couldn't have an IQ higher than 60. I knew that wouldn't be a good fit because she would never thrive. I love the reviews on Crossroads Christian School. However, every time I tried to call, no answer. I went to Crossroads and was told by the principal at the time that we would need to call and make an appointment. We were dismissed. That school was a no. Why would I put my child in a school just to be dismissed? I'm aware of the other schools, but none seem like a good fit for Annika. The staff at Language and Literacy have always made me feel like they go above and beyond for Annika. They have helped her hand over hand, encouraging her to write on her own. They also help her go to the potty. The teachers break things down so that Annika can understand what is being taught. Annika has only been talking for about two years, and she knows so many words and is learning to sound out and even spell words. She can also read with help on words she is unfamiliar with, thanks to the special attention that is provided at this school. One of my favorite things about Language and Literacy Academy is all the kids are special needs. Annika is in a place she can be herself. These kids help each other thrive and lean on each other for support. To the people who want to shut down the school, have you ever sat in a special needs class in public school? I have. The kindergartners up to fifth grade are placed in the same class. It's based off what you know. If Annika was in public school, she would probably still be in kindergarten. Not literally because of the no kid left behind, but she would be in the same class. How can she thrive if she's only taught on that level? At Language and Literacy, she physically moves from grade to grade. Has she mastered it all? No. But she's in a class with kids her age. Being a special needs parent is difficult. Being a parent in itself is difficult without adding to it. Public schools are not capable of teaching the amount of special needs students that Polk County has. It takes special teachers to want to teach at a special needs school. If it was easy, we wouldn't have the shortages we have. At Language and Literacy, you can see the love these teachers have towards their students. To the people who want to shut down the school, do you have a special needs child? Do you even have kids at all? Don't you want what's best for your kids? Wouldn't you do anything to help them succeed in life? Why would you want to close a school that many thrive from? Our kids deserve the best, and by shutting down Language and Literacy, you're taking that away. You're taking our child's voice away. You're taking the success of our children away. We don't go to public school for a reason. Don't take that away too. Our children...
Thank you. Marquesha Smith and on deck is William J. Boggs. Boss Boggs?
Thank you Superintendent Hyde, Board Members, and Madam Chair. My name is Marquesha Smith. I'm a current Language and Literacy Academy for Learning Board Member. I'm a local attorney and a parent of two children that are in Polk County schools currently. I'm also a former Polk County School Board employee for over a decade. I ended my career with Polk County School Boards as a school-based administrator. I am also certified with Exceptional Student Education K through 12. Our mission at Language and Literacy Academy for Learning is to accelerate growth in language, literacy, and social skills for students with special needs while engaging parents and partners in education. I must say that we are doing an exceptional job at that. Our school serves nearly 300 students, and the staff is working daily to ensure that our mission is being carried out. The school is necessary and it is needed for our students. We are asking that the Board look at our organization and afford us with the same opportunities as other schools that are similarly situated to ours. We have disaggregated the data, and to my knowledge, that data has been shared with the Superintendent. We are in the top two of the schools that are similarly situated as it relates to our demographics of our student body. I know that every decision has to be made with what is in the best interest of the students. I am asking that you also make your decision to renew our charter for more than one year, but what's in the best interest of our students. The students are who we serve. They come first. You must make your decisions with what is in the best interest of those children. Whatever decision you make, that impact is going to be far and is going to be wide-reaching. I am urging you to make a positive impact in the lives of our students and our families. They need this school. I have a heart for children. I sit on the Board as a unpaid Board Member, and that's not to say anything against anybody who gets paid for doing this work. I will always do this work. I want to be here. I am here as an advocate and to fight for the students, not necessarily the school, not necessarily any teachers, although they have my heart to, but for the students. Because if you do what's best for kids and you dig deep down every single time, you'll make the right decision. So I'm asking that you consider renewing us for the minimum of five years. Thank you.
William J., is it Boggs or Boss?
Yes, good afternoon. William Boss is my name, Pastor William Boss. I'm so honored to have an opportunity to stand and speak on behalf of LLA and certainly thanking you for all the great work that you're doing, having serviced 17 municipalities. That's, that's an awesome job, and certainly a lot, a lot of work that you have to do. But you've heard all the statistical data. You've heard the concern from the parents. You've heard how it is required of you to make the positive decisions that you need to make. You've heard how Dr. Callens, the husband and the wife, have presented you the necessary data in order for you to effectively make the decisions. Also, you've heard how the money was held up. This does not make sense. Does not make sense at all. This does not make sense, does not make sense at all. And also, too, they even award a one-year contract. And, and of course, it is indicated and shown and presented that L L A has done everything that it required to do. It, it does not make sense. So I certainly want to charge you, whom we have voted for. You have the capacity, you have the authority to make proper decisions. Certainly, Superintendent Hyde, we, we charge you with ensuring that the proper decisions are made and award L L A a minimum of a five-year contract. And also, too, I'm, I'm requesting, as the leader of this community, from the concerned citizens of the state of Florida, whomever came out and evaluated this program, they should not be allowed to come out again. Because obviously, they did not, they did not evaluate it properly, and it was not equitable and fair consideration. It is not fair when you begin to see your staff and parents, you know, the students. It's all about the students. What does the students do? What about the relationship that was established from the very beginning of, of, of school? What about that? When you go home, I want you to look at yourself and say, the authority that God have given you for this community and for this district, that you make the proper decision because it's what I call a tri-generational effect. We've also discovered that the reorganization of the Learning Support Division is being reorganized and the name changed. What happens to the staff? The staff when the name changed, are they going to lose their jobs? Are they targeted? We've heard rumor in the community, as a community leader. I want you to hear me very clearly that many of the minority teachers, those in leadership capacities, are going to be asked out when the reorganization take place. I encourage you, I encourage you, when you begin to look at what is going on, did you look at it from a closed eye? And also, begin to look at the staff here. When you heard the man of God talk about his wife going to the hospital, threatening a heart attack, behind decisions that were made that were unfair, unequitable, and unfair. I charge you to go back, take a look at what you're doing, within, I say, within forty-eight hours, an ad hoc meeting be called to take a good look at the contract reward. L L A, what they are entitled to do. And I think it's no more than fair, and the plan feels should be level as all others are. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next will be Patricia Mailhot.
Please say, respectfully, I, I won't stand to allow some of those comments to go without being addressed because it's hyperbole, it's hyperbole, it's gossip, and it's rumor. So let's be very candid and very clear. We have stood on our word that even through restructuring the organization, no one has lost their position. Albeit, some individuals may have been reassigned. They were reassigned to commensurate level position, same title, and same salary. So I will not continue to allow this rumor and these lies to persist in our community. Because at the end of the day, our Exceptional Student Education Department deserves and it is warranted to be restructured. Our L E A positions were all sustained, even though last year, the prior administration had allowed a six million dollar I D E A deficit to exist. We were accused of over-expending and stealing money as of late. I dare anyone to come forward and show any evidence of that. In fact, I have addressed this issue with the board repeatedly and showed them the I D E A budget. We've been told that there's this mass exodus of people leaving Exceptional Student Education in the district. False. I have two years of data. I provide the school board with an update every Friday about staff vacancies. You know how many average vacancies we had per week last, during the twenty-one to twenty-two school year? Forty. You know how many average E S E vacancies we have this year? Forty-two. So again, I'm not going to allow the rumors to persist. I appreciate your passion as it relates to the school in question, but I will not allow those comments to go unchecked because they're false.
Superintendent Hyde, I say to you, if the rumor has gone out, I'm suggesting to you check in your house. Because obviously, as a community leader, the rumor has gone out and it's not healthy, and I'm encouraging you.
Unfounded, completely unfounded, no data, nothing to suggest it. So hurt feelings do not equate to reality.
Again, if the rumor has gone out, check in your house. Because obviously, there's a lot of this enchanted people in the community is deeply concerned and is getting to the community leaders. I'm not questioning your judgment. That's not my assignment today. I've made it very clear to you and this board in this community what we think should happen with L L A. And also, we've heard rumor concerning the reorganization.
We're, we're not going to, we are not going to continue this conversation. You are welcome to have it offline with the two of you.
I made it very clear. Thank you so kindly.
You are done. Thank you. Patricia Mailhot is next, and Tasha Goff is on deck. Patricia Mailhot? Sorry, we started too quick on the last one. I couldn't get the on deck.
Good evening. Hello, I'm Patty Mailhot. I'm a paraprofessional for Miss Stacy's first grade, first grade class at Language, Language and Literacy Academy for Learning. When I was hired in November of twenty-two, I had very little experience in the classroom with children. I felt out of my comfort zone. But being a mom of five and a nana of fourteen, I thought I would go ahead and give it a try. Working with the children in the class, there are good days and some bad days. Each child is unique in their own way. I have worked one-on-one with many of them. Some get frustrated at the simplest tasks. I give them words of praise, whether it's you're doing good or I know you can do it. And when they complete it, they have a huge smile on their face. They love the stickers and stamps that we give them. I've always wondered if the kids really understand what I'm saying. During Black History Month, each day, we talked about a person that had an impact in American history. There are people like Harriet Tubman, Jackie Robinson, Martin Luther King Jr., Malcolm X, just to name a few. We watched kids' videos, which was very informative, even to myself. When Miss Stacy had a parent conference, she was told by the mother, by the mother, that he came home and told her what was talked about. When Stacy told me about that, I cried and then realized that they do listen and do pay attention. This is what brings me great joy and encouragement. Since being here at L L A L, I've wanted to go back to school and get my teaching degree. I realize that L L A L is making a world of difference to our kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tasha Goff and on deck is Stacy Leapart.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Tasha Goff, and my son attends Language and Literacy Academy for Learning. He's six years old. He's in the first grade. He was diagnosed with autism spectrum disorder with a speech impairment in two thousand and nineteen. When he attended a public school in Polk County in the school year of two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, I had faith in them. I felt like they would be able to work with my son because I needed to learn as well. This is a journey for me too. When he attended that school, it was a major disappointment. He had poor follow-up with I E Ps. They did not follow up with me. They did not go all the way through with the I E P forms. He had Fs and Ds every nine weeks, and the teacher had the nerve to say that my son was too much for her. Teachers don't say that. You're not supposed to say that as a teacher. And that hurt me as a parent because I know I'm learning to work with him, with his disorder. But if a teacher that is highly trained can sit there and tell me boldly that she cannot handle my son, he's too much for her, that's a disappointment. It's very discouraging. So I gave up on the Polk County School Board system, and I said, I'm going to teach my son at home. But then somebody came up to me and they informed me about Language and Literacy Academy for Learning, and I took a leap of faith, and I said that I want my son to go. And since then, my son, he has been making great grades, As and Bs, testing successfully. And the most important thing to me is that he's talking to me. When he was diagnosed with autism, that doctor told me that my son would never talk to me. And he is talking to me because of this school. He gained confidence from this school, and as a parent, I gained reassurance because of this school. They gave me confidence as well because I'm learning. The staff are compassionate. They're caring. They're very patient, and they're culturally competent for all of the students of this school. So I'm asking as a concerned parent that you all reflect on the Polk County School Board mission statement, which clearly speaks about providing high-quality education to all students, not some, but all students. Because this school, Language and Literacy Academy for Learning, has exemplified that not only just to my son, but to all students. So please abide by what's right for our students. You're not just affecting the staff. You're not just affecting the parents. But you're clearly sabotaging these students from having a fair chance and an opportunity to be just as successful as the next person. Thank you.
Stacy Leapart and on deck is Robin Baron.
Hi, good evening. My name is Stacy Leapart. I am a first-grade teacher at Language and Literacy Academy for Learning and also have been an educator for twenty-six years. I want to refer back to the article published earlier this year where it was stated, "We have behavior problems, especially in middle schools," Miller said, looking around at her colleagues. Everybody's nodding. I get phone calls almost daily. So this will increase behavior support to the students, not only with disabilities, but students who don't have disabilities but have concerning behavior. Language and Literacy Academy for Learning specializes in the most difficult behaviors in this district. Language and Literacy Academy for Learning have certified instructors of professional crisis management, have registered behavior technicians, have a board certified, excuse me, behavioral analyst, and certify seventy-five percent of the staff in de-escalation strategies, planned ignoring, pivotant praise, et cetera. Parents come to Language and Literacy Academy for Learning after their students have been expelled from Polk County public schools due to behavior. Parents are able to stay on their jobs instead of being called excessively from Polk County School Board, Polk County School staff, who ask parents to pick up their child every day due to unmanageable behaviors. The Winter Haven Police Department comes to Language and Literacy Academy for Learning for advice on proper restraints and have established a partnership with Language and Literacy Learning Academy. And together, they have become a valuable resource to Polk County. If you have a school that specializes in behavior and the district is struggling in providing behavioral supports in the classroom, why would the superintendent approve Language and Literacy Academy for Learning for only one year? Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Baron and on deck is Beatrice Martinez.
It's Barrow. I don't know if that makes a difference.
Oh, I'm sorry. If you could just state your name for, full name for the record, I appreciate it.
Robin Barrow. I am the great aunt of Dennis' householder. He is a miracle born at twenty-three weeks, weighing fifteen ounces. I have guardianship of D J. He has attended Language and Literacy for six years. Before that, he attended another Polk County school, failing first grade twice. He learned very little. They, in my opinion, had a horrible E S E program. He was being bullied and came home crying almost every day. He walked on his toes, had almost no social skills, couldn't read, and only wrote a couple of words. He wouldn't ask for help and stuttered terribly. His ability to not be distracted was a big fat zero. Now at fourteen, he can read, have social skills, ask questions. Instead of not being mentally present in class, he is present. No more stuttering, can write a paragraph by himself instead of those two words. This is all because of the hard work of Language and Literacy staff. He feels safe and protected and smart, not a dummy, as he was called seven years ago. He is not at the level of a fourteen-year-old in seventh grade, but this school, with skill and patience, placed a foundation under him that can, that he can exist and function in today's society. Again, a reflection of Language and Literacy. Not just my kid, but I've seen amazing things with other students. For me, seven years ago, I was a wreck, roadblocks everywhere. Dr. Callens and Miss Sheena, as I call her, personally came on a Saturday and took care of registering my D J, and Monday, he started school as I felt I was falling apart. My life changed in a positive way that day. I was about to give up. They have always answered all my questions and with compassion and professionalism, they made sure my miracle needs were met. That day, I left that school smiling. There was no greater feeling for me personally, knowing that even though D J at birth didn't get a chance to fully develop, he is getting the best chance now at this school. The staff has always worked with me to offer the best for D J. I am grateful that with their help, encouragement, leadership, and tons of patience and love for their jobs, my D J has went from a difficult journey into one with hope. As a special needs child, on behalf of all the students, please don't take it away. It would be a tragedy for the kid's life and mine. D J asked me what was going on. He said to please tell y'all that he is a miracle, that Language and Literacy is a miracle for him.
Beatrice Martinez and on deck is Bobby Dees.
Good evening, board members. My name is Beatrice Martinez, and I'm the fifth-grade teacher at Language and Literacy Academy for Learning. The overall federal index rating represent the federal accountability system. Every student succeeds at the E S S A calculation, which includes the same components at graded schools. Any schools that receive an overall federal index rating below forty percent is a school identifies as a school that needs support. Data pulled directly from the F L D O E website indicates the following. When you compare the federal index rating with three others E S E centers in Polk County, Language and Literacy Academy for Learning is twenty-five percent. Victory Rich E S E, charter school in Lake Wells with nineteen percent. Dotty Sanders with twenty-one percent. Karen Segals with twenty-six percent. P C P S E S E centers. Language and Literacy Academy for Learning are outperforming three other schools, Ginno Dells, Dotty Sanders, and Victory Rich. Now, I have one question. Why is the superintendent only approving Language and Literacy Academy for Learning one year when Language and Literacy Academy for Learning is outperforming the others E S E chapter schools like Victory Rich and two others P C P S E S E centers, Ginno Dells and Dotty Sanders? And also, I would love to continue in Language and Literacy Academy for Learning to provide windows of opportunities for the students and the family. Thank you.
Bobby Dees and on, on deck is Johnny Lawson.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bobby Dees. I'm a resident of Winter Haven. I'm here tonight to speak regarding Consent Agenda I, Subject One, Farm Worker Career Development Grant. I actually like the idea of helping low-income people who work hard to have the opportunity to get educated and find better work opportunities. However, I have concerns about this particular undertaking. My concerns are basically about the target group of this grant, migrant seasonal farm workers. By design, M S F Ws are supposed to return to their native nation once their seasonal work ends. ends. By spending this money on these people, are we just throwing money away? I reviewed the eligibility description of people who are allowed to receive this money, and it describes US citizens, resident aliens, asylum seekers, refugees, etc. Over the past two years, 5 million illegals have crossed our borders, mostly unchecked. They have not been vetted for criminal or health issues. These people have been quietly dropped into our communities under cover of night by the thousands, by the Biden administration, and are quietly given legal privileges to be here by the Biden administration. So far, Florida legislatures have not had the will to challenge and remove these people from the state. I am concerned that most of the people who will be seeking education through this grant funding will not have the ability to trace the status of their residency here in the US because they entered illegally. Until we can trace the entry of each of these people and the process they went through to be here legally, I am against paying taxpayer dollars for the education of any one of these people, and ask you to vote no on this grant funding. Please, vote no. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dees. Johnny Lawson, and on deck is Anthony Baz.
Real quick, I want to take you on a little journey. Before I became the social worker at Language and Literacy, I heard about it, and I talked to the assistant principal and Sheena Adams, and she said, "Well, just come by, you know, let's take a tour, and you talk to Dr. Callens." I came by and I saw the teachers, the paraprofessionals, I saw the physical therapists, occupational therapists, the speech therapists, and I saw them working with kids that could not speak, some was on feeding tubes, some had mental health issues, some had learning disabilities. So after I met with Dr. Callens, I went in my car, and I began to cry, because those kids were me. It was me. I had a stuttering problem, I could not speak, I had an anger issue, I had mental health issues, that was because kids were bullying me in the school, and I was, had a slow learning disability. Now, back then, I'm gonna take y'all back, it was called Chapter One. And what they would do, they would put us way back in the back of the school, and we would be in a little room, probably about 20 of us, we would have a playground to the side, we never saw any other kids, we never went to the cafeteria. So my family struggled with trying to find somewhere for me to go. But we found a little lady at Stan Ball Middle School called Rosa Pitters. Her name was Rosa Pitters, and she epitomized what Dr. Callens does for Language and Literacy. We didn't have that then. But she would not let me stop until I began to speak like normal kids, and I began to learn like normal kids. Board, I prayed for y'all. And I said, "God," I'm gonna tell you what my prayer words, I say, "God, I know that you put each and every one of these people on this board and our superintendent here for a reason." Now, I don't know if they have kids that cannot speak. I don't know if they have kids that have learning disabilities. I don't know if they have kids that are autistic. Lord, but I ask you to open up their mind and their heart to Language and Literacy. I ask you to open up their minds, to let them know that any kid that have been forgotten about, that have said they couldn't make it, that have any type of issues, that we have our arms open wide. And I'm continuing to pray for you, because you don't have an easy job. But I thank you for what you're doing, and I think we should all pray for our school board members and our superintendent, because I think you're doing a great job, and I believe that you're gonna do this for us. God bless you.
Anthony Baz, and on deck is Amber DeJesus.
Hello, school board. My name is Anthony Baz. I moved here to Florida from Puerto Rico on February 5th of last year. I'm an ESL, English as Second Language major, and I started working as an ESC paraprofessional for Language and Literacy Academy for Learning in December of last year. In the first month of working for LLAL, I was overjoyed that I finally got the opportunity to work in a school setting, even if it was as a paraprofessional. I got to meet our students and fellow coworkers, and was pleasantly surprised with the way the security is implemented in the school. It just feels like a safe and secure work environment. I mean, I grew up in a school where we had literally shootings from gangs in front of our school, so this school feels very safe. The access and how the doors lock to make sure the safety of our students is tremendous, and I love that. And I love that we have guards around the school, too. The teaching methods and techniques that are structured around each student meets their needs and level. I got to meet our students and fellow coworkers, oh, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. So I was also surprised by the technology that is being implemented in the classrooms, smart boards and laptops, allow for a more interactive experience in the classroom, which opens doors for fun learning activities. The school has a platform where teachers can keep in touch with parents on their child's academic progress, too. And lastly, one of my happiest moments is when I help students focus and stay on task and remind them why it's important to learn in order to become a successful individual. My goal as an ESC paraprofessional is to assist teachers and help students acquire the skills they need in order to excel and prosper in all aspects of their lives. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Amber DeJesus, and on deck is Glenda White.
My name is Amber DeJesus. I have children that go to Language and Literacy. I'm here to talk about Language and Literacy Academy and why it is important that we keep this school open for our students. Being able to communicate effectively, both verbally and in writing, is critical for success in nearly every area of life. Language and Literacy Academy provides our students with a unique opportunity to these skills and a supportive and nurturing environment. At Language and Literacy, students receive individual attention and instructions from expert teachers who are dedicated to helping them improve their language and literacy skills. Sorry. The approach allows our students to progress at their own pace and receive the specific support they need to succeed. Furthermore, Language and Literacy serves a population of students who may not have access to the same resources and opportunities as their peers. By keeping this school open, we are helping provide all students with a unique chance to succeed. In addition, Language and Literacy is an important asset to our community as drives language and literacy education, bringing together students, teachers, and parents to create a supportive network of individuals who are committed to improving the lives of our students. Closing Language and Literacy would have a significant negative impact on our students and our community. It would deprive our students of a unique and, sorry, I'm nervous, y'all, variable education opportunity, and it would leave a gap in our community educational resources. Therefore, I urge you to keep Language and Literacy open. Let us continue to provide our students with skills they need to succeed, and let us continue to support our community by investing in the education of our youth. Thank you.
Glenda White, and then on deck is Monica Williams.
Good evening. My name is Glenda White. I'm a Winter Haven resident. I want to speak this evening on two items from the consent agenda. The first item is I, one, the Farm Workers Career Development Grant. I'm concerned about the eligibility access of this grant, or aspects, excuse me. I've reviewed attachments C, which each of you have a copy of, of the grant regarding eligibility of participants. The descriptions are clear, but there's no real way to ensure that participants are actually legally there. As we all know, at least 5 million illegal aliens have crossed our southern border over the last two years. They're then quietly shipped to and dropped in our community without our knowledge. These people are given legal status with no vetting for criminal or health problems, and we are forced to pay for their food, housing, education, and medical care. Because the Biden administration has illegally allowed millions to enter our nation and illegally given them legal status, we cannot possibly determine whether participants have true legal status. If these people are deemed illegal at a later time, we have then broken the terms of this grant. I'm asking you to please vote no on this proposal. I'm also concerned about the Instructional Coach Program, Item P2. I think the expense is reasonable, as, and the attentions are great. I want to thank Mr. Allen for sending me the link to the discussion from June 2021 on this matter. I've also done some research and found that there are also negative consequences to coaching. I would like to see the school board present a report on the current status of the program before moving forward. I'm most concerned about the time factor required to be in this program. Teachers are already saddled with serious demands on their time. Does this program require even more of their precious time? I realize there's an observation component, but what about the coaching sessions itself? Are teachers seeing this as a negative experience or a positive one? Do we know that? Along with the conceptual aspects of coaching, is the school system approaching real-life issues such as discipline that are serious deterrents to learning and a major reason for teachers leaving the profession? Please produce this research, make the outcomes public before you spend this money. We're about to spend another $391,000. Now, I understand it's S R money, but we shouldn't just spend money unless we have a really clear indication of what we're gonna do with it and how we're gonna use every penny. I understand our current school budget is 2.25 billion, and if we just do the simple math on that, we're looking at around $20,000 spent per year per student. So I'm asking you please to consider before you spend. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Monica Williams.
Hello, how are you? You're all in some tight positions right now. My name is Monica Williams. I want to introduce myself. I'm a healthcare provider here in Polk County. I'm also a community partner with Kathleen High School, as well as many other schools. I want to point out today facts and gains. I don't want to point out opinions or what I feel. Let's point about facts. When it comes to the, the school, Dr. Callens' school, the fact is, is that she had made a numerous amount of gains. When she took over the school, she had improved the school's ability to work with students with disabilities. Being a healthcare provider, I want to make you aware of, if we change the environment of students with autism, we set them back even more. Mrs. Council made a demand in the paper, the new superintendent for learning, asking for several units, 20 new ESC positions, and five new behavior, mental health positions. I myself have a son who has a learning disability. His name is Jacob Lee Palmer. He attends Rochelle School of the Arts. And I also have an open IDA complaint and a open OCR complaint. Mrs., Dr. Callens has over 200 students at her school. The reason why I have a complaint is because Rochelle Schools of Art failed to advocate for a student with a learning disability. I want you to take a moment. If this school goes away, these students have to be placed somewhere. They will be placed into our public schools. If a school like Rochelle failed to advocate for my son Jacob, who is ADHD, let's look at how many complaints parents will have with OCR and the IDA. That means that we open ourselves up to lawsuits. We need to think before we quickly make a quick decision. If we just keep this school open for one year, we have to make a plan to where we're gonna place these, 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 these kids. And there's not a lot of places based off the parents here that these students can go. The next one I'd like to point out is that, look at all the parents in the community, people have come up and stated the need for this school, how this school have changed their students' lives. I can only imagine. My heart went out when I heard a couple of names, but let me give you a couple of names. But before I do that, Superintendent Ha, I want to remind you of what you stated in the paper. I feel that the system needs to be shifted from compliance-driven to being compassionate-driven, with a focus on students getting the services they need, and these are students that need services. So let me call out a couple of names. I want to call out Veronica, I want to call out Monica, I want to call out Christopher, Chris, Natalie, Jacob, Jera, Jerry, and Ashley. These students need these services. If you guys do not approve it for longer, these students will have nowhere to go. I encourage you and pray that you guys make the best of it.
That concludes the public comments for items on the agenda. We are at 7:15 right now, 7:17 right now. I'm gonna request that we take a brief recess and come back at 7:25 to continue the rest of our agenda.
The 2021 through 2022 school year, our Focus on Excellence Employee Recognition campaign was the biggest yet. We celebrated almost 500 staff members from all over our district.
I want to say thank you sincerely to everyone involved, from our employees who are serving to nominate their colleagues and bringing honor and recognition to all that they do each day, across the various roles. And I think that's what oftentimes gets missed in educational settings, is how many different roles have to be played or fulfilled each day in order for us to accomplish our goal of putting students first.
I think the Focus on Excellence campaign is great, because it gives not just the parents and students in the district, but also the general public as well, a better view of the kind of things that happen in the school system.
It was very rewarding, you know, just solidifying that, you know, when you come in and you try to do your best that you possibly can do, and you have that passion that other people are gonna notice it, whether you're doing it for recognition or not.
This program really is like a shining star for us, you know? I mean, everyone knows that I'm a bus driver, but they don't know the things that we do behind the scenes.
I just felt humbled and honored. I was like, wow, I've done something that people are noticing and they're appreciating what I do, and it just made me feel very special.
I also want to say thank you to all of our business partners. We've had some amazing partners really come forward and support our staff through the donation of time, donation of resources, gifts, and really just to stand by us and honor and recognize these individuals.
Thanks to our many generous business partners, we were able to give prizes to our winners, as well as any employee that was nominated.
I think the Focus on Excellence campaign is great, because it rewards those who are doing some of the most important work in our community, and recognizes individuals who are too often overlooked.
When you give back to something like this that has the ability to touch really everyone and realizing the impact that it has on them when they're recognized, it's pretty humbling.
Our future depends on children and education, and it's very impactful, whatever can be done to help them do a better job. And everyone appreciates getting a pat on the back and knowing that other people see them doing a good job and how dedicated to what they're trying to accomplish every day.
The strength of our community is by and large a direct result of how efficient and how effective and how strong our school system is. And we have some amazing employees across our school district. We had the opportunity to highlight just a few this year. We hope to expand this program going into the future, but with that, we're gonna need additional supports.
Polk County Public School employees, to nominate a coworker for recognition, visit the Hub homepage. And if you are interested- And if you are interested in becoming a sponsor of the Focus on Excellence campaign, just visit our website at polkschoolsfl.com/excellence to learn more.
It's early morning at Union Academy, but that doesn't slow down the Bluegrass Band as they serenade the gathering crowd in the cafeteria. They are all here to celebrate this man, J.J. Corbett, one of the first Black paratroopers in World War II and longtime teacher, coach, and school board member at Polk County Public Schools. In honor of his years of service, Union Academy is naming their media center after Mr. Corbett.
We have a very unique setting here at Union Academy, and it's only based in our history. With Mr. Corbett being here today and us naming the media center after Mr. Corbett specifically, we're putting his name on the building to represent that history.
I want to thank all of my friends who are here for this honor, and I look back and wonder, do I deserve it? I hope that I've lived the kind of life that this honor could be in my name.
To find out more about the dedication, check out our new story at polkschoolsfl.com/news.
All right, we are back. Thank you for allowing us to take a brief break. So the next item on our agenda will be approval of the minutes. So we have two sets of minutes this evening. The first will be from February 28, 2023, school board meeting. I'll seek a motion to approve the minutes. Ms. Miller and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Making sure we have all the votes electronically as well. So our second set of minutes will be from the February 28, 2023 work session. And I will seek a motion to approve the minutes from that work session meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Dr. Allen and Ms. Miller, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Maybe waiting for a couple more votes.
Yeah, I see it now.
And the motion carries. All right, we'll now move on to our consent agenda. I'll seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move. Second.
Ms. Fields and Ms. Miller, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Superintendent Hyde, would you like to introduce any new administrators?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, it would be my absolute pleasure this evening. First and foremost, we have Mr. Lance Lawson. He will be transitioning from assistant principal at Bartow High School to be the principal at Bartow High School. Until July 1, he has received an interim promotion. We want to congratulate him. He did an outstanding job. He's well-known within the community, very well-liked and respected amongst parents and students alike. He and I had a very candid conversation about where that school needs to go, and I was very pleased with his attitude and his demeanor. Don't let his quiet side fool you. He is a man of action and a great intentionality, and so I'm excited for him. And so, Mr. Lawson, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Thank you, school board members. First, I'd like to thank God. I'd like to thank my beautiful wife, Lyndia, for all of your support and everything, you know. You know more about Bartow High School than anybody. My beautiful daughter, in her absence, she said she wanted to go to dance and Girl Scout because you guys were too boring. My mom, who drove here from Jacksonville, I'm always been supportive.
Oh, please have them stand and be reckoned. You can't do that.
All right. I'm not done. My mom's husband drove up here and with her. My father-in-law and my mother-in-law, in her absence, she's on baby duty. So I appreciate the continuous support and the free on-demand babysitting. That's wonderful. So thank you guys for coming. Also, I have one of our amazing administrators, head of schools, Ms. Carrie Brown, who stayed. And our amazing nurse, I told her not to come because I don't like a lot of fanfare, but she came anyway, so I appreciate you guys also. So I'm not going to take up a lot of time, but I just want to say that I'm humbled and I'm elated by the opportunity. This isn't about me, it's about Bartow High School. I plan on continuing to build a culture where teachers and students enjoy and love coming to work, making sure that we push students to be the absolute best, having those hard conversations, whether it's with parents, students, or faculty members. So I appreciate the opportunity. I have one more thing to say, but I don't like to talk a lot, and I think I forgot. So y'all have a wonderful evening, and thank you.
Do you want one with your family?
Yeah, bring them down.
And while he does that, I want to just add a couple additional comments. Board members, as you know, we are overlapping positions. Dr. Clemens hasn't quite retired yet. However, it's important for us to establish an administrator, especially under these circumstances, allowing him the remainder of the school year to work, build relationships, be involved in the staffing, the budgeting, and all the decision-making, while allowing the current principal to really ride out on the sunset and enjoy all those end-of-the-year activities and the culmination of her career and her profession. So we're excited to have him with us in this role. And next, we have Daramus Griffin, who was the payroll manager in Albany, Georgia, at Area Primary Healthcare and is now our new director of payroll.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Thank you, board members. I will be honest, I was not prepared. I came here from Columbus, Georgia, and I'm... Thank you all. I just want to say this is my first time here in Polk County. I do look forward to working with not just the employees of Polk County Public Schools, but also the families. And I just sitting here listening to everybody's passion and that, how everybody just came out and came together, I can tell that you guys are a really close-knit community. You love what you do, you're passionate about what you do, and I just look forward to integrating myself into that culture. And I would thank you guys for showing me who you really are today. So thank you.
Do you have any guests with you?
No, sir.
Okay. Madam Chair, that concludes the introduction of new administrators this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Next, we will go to our action agenda. Number... Meeting a staff for the first time. Number Q1 is the Polk State Lakeland Gateway to College Collegiate High School charter renewal. And I will seek a motion to approve the Polk State Lakeland Gateway to College Collegiate High Schools charter renewal for a term of five years, serving students in 11th and 12th grade. Ms. Miller and Mr. Sharpless? Any discussion? Ms. Fields?
Yeah, so at the February board meeting, I was not present, and I wanted to know why we are recommending... And I just realized it, I thought it was a 10-year contract, but I see that it's a five-year contract, so I'm trying to understand why we're recommending, why Superintendent Hyde, why you're recommending five over 10. I looked at the information, and from what I can see, it was the committee recommending approval, seven out of the eight members recommended approval, and one recommended denial. And then, three out of the eight recommended a five-year contract, four recommended a 10-year contract, and one recommended no contract. And I don't know a lot of history about this school, but I do know that they've been, I believe they've been highly effective for the last five years. So can you kind of help me understand why you're recommending five over 10?
Ma'am, and I think you actually touched on it. It was a 50% split amongst the evaluators, quite frankly, as to the renewal and the duration of renewal. Additionally, we did have to work with the school. There were concerns that were initially raised, that when the school was first proposed, it was to serve a certain population of students, that they were not meeting the percentage that they were expected to meet each year. But through conversation, through mediation, they were able to attain that number this year, so we felt confident extending them the minimum of a five-year extension. That remains my recommendation.
So how does it work when they request a certain amount of years? And I guess at the last work session, you all discussed what was recommended, I guess. I don't know.
We did.
And it's the same reasons I just cited for you.
Right. I'm talking to the superintendent. Thank you. When the school is not aware that it's a five-year instead of a 10-year, how do we make sure that we go back and let them know that it's recommended for something less? Or do we do that?
They are made aware of the renewal, and they are made aware of the duration of the contract that we're willing to extend them.
Okay, well, I'm not really sure if that was the case on this one, whether or not they understood that it was for a five-year renewal instead of a 10.
I'll have to double-check the correspondence that's provided to them.
I would appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion on item Q1? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next item will be Q2 Staffing Updates Learning Support. There'll be two motions under this, so the first will be a motion to approve the staffing updates... I'll seek a motion to approve the staffing updates for learning support as presented.
Move approval?
Second.
Ms. Cunningham and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Ms. Fields?
This item was under the consent agenda, and because it was intertwined with the internal audit position, we... I requested that it be moved down to the action agenda. And again, I wasn't at the meeting back in February, and I have some concerns about the funding of the positions that's being added. And I have some additional information that I think would be very valuable as it relates to Medicaid funding and the trend for the last five to six years, because it's my understanding that these positions, some of them that's been added, monies from the Medicaid funds would be the part of the funding for those positions, and the superintendent can correct me if I'm wrong. And because I have not had time to really get the information and review it, as I would like to, I am not going to be supporting this part of the reorganization at this point in time. This is just for '22, '23, and '23, '24 will come back for approval at a later date. Is that correct, Superintendent?
I mean, I understand your hesitancy to vote this evening. However, I'm not familiar with how you summarize the funding for those positions.
Well, I wasn't present, but...
In future subsequent years, if additional Medicaid funding and Medicare funding reimbursables become available, absolutely, we would look to maximize those reimbursements where we can for positions and supports. And... and reinvest those dollars back into the schools to provide those supports directly to students. But as of this moment, there are some additional costs that would come to us, and there was a restructuring that took place. So, I'd be happy to schedule an appointment for you and Ms. Castles and Mr. Pitts to walk through that one final time, even though you've indicated you won't be supporting it this evening. I understand that.
That would help for the next round.
Yes, ma'am.
'23, '24.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And the motion carries 6-1. Next will be item Q3 Purchase of Insignia Software. I will seek a motion to approve the purchase of Insignia Software Corporation Teaching and Learning, which is $574,000 contract over five years. Ms. Fields and Dr. Allen, any discussion? Dr. Allen?
Superintendent, you want to just give maybe a little background on this purchase? Just for context, please.
Yes, so the board will recall that when we first went down the road of trying to provide parents with more informed choice options as it related to instructional materials, that the Destiny, Falet Destiny software system initially indicated that a willingness to partner with school districts and create software that would allow that. They then rescinded that, making it incredibly difficult for school districts like ours to create opt-out options for our families when it comes to instructional materials, which is now a requirement, as you know. Moving forward, we started shopping for a new program, so Insignia Library Systems will allow us to do that. We will then transfer over all of our inventory into this program, and within a year after training and support, we will then migrate all of it to there. What we like about this program as well is, if the board will recall that this year and for next year, because of the manner in which we have to hand-enter information into Destiny Falet, it requires that we scheduled all purchases for schools based throughout the year. So, all elementary schools submit their purchase requests during one period of time, so we can adequately review those and make sure that we're purchasing materials that are appropriate. Then, we do the same thing for middle, we do the same thing for high school. Moving forward with Insignia, even though that vetting process will take place, it will not require us to restrict it to one period during the year. It will allow ongoing procurements. Once they're approved, a message will automatically go to parents, saying there's new additions to the library or to the classroom media supplies. Please review, and you have the option to opt out. So, actually, it would expand parent choice and parent interest, because they can then make those decisions throughout the year instead of being limited right now to beginning of the school year and then again in January. So, we felt it provided far more flexibility for our staff, and for our parents and guardians.
Appreciate that clarification, and I just want to say thanks for listening to the board's request on that. It is a little disappointing that when we pay a vendor for a service and we ask for a feature that they can't accommodate. So, I know that this has been an ongoing process, and we haven't given up on it. And so, I appreciate your acute attention to that, and I trust you, and I appreciate that.
And this could be something, Dr. Allen, since you brought it up, because there is a piece of, there's a bill in the legislature, and there's an interest on behalf of the Department of Education that they... Many of you are aware of this, because you met with the Commissioner during Legislative Week. You're aware that the state may be looking to procure their own software to manage this process. Well, I hope they do. It'll save me money. It'll save me $100,000, quite frankly. So, the more that they can look at so they have consolidation, and we can get alignment across the state, the better off we all are. So, I'm hopeful for that. But for right now, we needed a replacement. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nolte?
Yes, and I'm the rookie up here. Since they're going to vote on it in two months, if we were to delay the vote, how would that hurt us again?
I don't have staff here this evening. The concern would be migrating the data and making sure that all of our libraries, utility, all the library content successfully transitions over. So, what I, I can't get you an answer until tomorrow, quite frankly, because our media staff are not here this evening. So, we run the risk that if they don't adopt something, then I may be behind the timeline, a month behind the timeline, to get everything transitioned over. And I don't know, respectfully, I don't feel confident speaking, as to what type of impact that may have.
No, that's Pascal. That's not...
Even if they do have it approved, if it goes into this session, it would not be something that we could utilize for an August 10th start date for next school year.
Correct.
So, whether or not they approve something in the next 60 days won't help us for next year.
And they couldn't tell us, I'm sorry, they couldn't tell us, even at the meeting, Commissioner Diaz didn't name, there was just something they were discussing. So, I'm not sure that it's even been identified yet. I'd hate to delay.
Now, the board could approve the item this evening. And then, I could talk to staff and ask if we can table it for 30 days, as we would any other procurement, for additional review prior to initiating the purchase. That would give me an appropriate timeline to come back to the board within the next two weeks, even if it's at a workshop, to share with you that process. And I could always pull the item from my office. The board's approving the procurement. However, if I decide to alter that procurement, I have that authority, is my recollection.
Mr. Sharpless?
If we approve tonight, could we also decide to cancel that?
That's what I just walked through. So, I think that would...
You would, but I'm on the board itself. Could we bring that back or no?
I would bring it back to the board. And then, the board could say, "Mr. Hyde, we no longer want to support the item, but you've already voted on it once." It'd be easier for me to pull it and not follow through with the procurement, but I'm going to need 24 to 48 hours to get with staff.
I would suggest, if you wish to take that approach, ask the board to authorize you to execute it, but do not execute it until...
Until further notice. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Bridges, do we need to amend that motion?
The motion.
Yes, and I think an appropriate motion would be to authorize the superintendent to enter into it at a future date upon bringing this report back to the board. Or you could simply wait until that date to authorize it.
So, Ms. Fields, did I hear you amended your motion to what Mr. Bridges said?
If that's what the consensus on the board is, I'm fine with that. And the superintendent is okay with that? Superintendent, are you okay with that amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure, and I'll second that.
So, Ms. Fields and Dr. Allen, with the amended motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. We do need to go back to Q2, because I said there were two motions, but then I only did one of them. So, the second motion under Q2 was to approve the staffing proposal plan for internal audit, and I will hear a motion to that effect.
Move to approve. Second.
Ms. Cunningham and Dr. Allen, that was quick. I thought you were going to fight over it. Any discussion?
It was a radio voice.
Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. On to Q4 is Language and Literacy Academy for Learning Charter Renewal. The recommended action is a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation of the charter renewal for Language and Literacy Academy for Learning for a term of one year. Do we have a motion? We have to do motion before a second unless we don't get a motion. Do not have a motion? All right. Ms. Fields?
I wanted to know if the superintendent is in a place of changing the recommendation from one year to three to five years.
I would be. Mr. Bridges had previously cited that there were concerns with a one-year. My one-year recommendation was to allow, is really an extension. It was not a renewal. I want to make sure we're clear and we're on the record of this. The motion and the recommendation was not to serve in a punitive manner. It was to serve the purpose as has been intended, which was to get action on issues that we had concerns with, and very legitimate concerns with, as we outlined in a multiple-page letter. And so, you know, we're not anti-charter. I've never been anti-charter. In fact, I promoted charter schools when I worked for the Florida Department of Education, and we see great value in those. But we need high-performing charters. And, you know, part of this is, when you have that level and that number of concerns, they deserve to be addressed. And so, the goal was to give the school adequate time to address those concerns, so they could come back and ask for a much longer contract. And so, if it's the interest of the board, you know, and I know Mr. Bridges had previously recommended, if I recall, he recommended no less than a two-year. I'm fine with honoring that recommendation or even a three-year, because as was cited, if there continue to be concerns in certain areas, we have every right to go back and decertify the charter. We have that right under statutory authority, so, under certain conditions, so...
My concern with one-year was simply that the renewal process would start again almost immediately. That is primarily, I mean, certainly, certainly, it's a tough situation for the school, but it's also a tough situation for the staff when you have to... Because it's a rigorous process.
Ms. Cunningham, oh, sorry, Ms. Fields?
It says here, recommended action, motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation of the charter renewal for Language and Literacy Academy for Learning for a term of one year.
Correct. We debated on the language back and forth. It went between extension and renewal several times. Mr. Bridges, I don't know if you want to clarify why we ended up...
Well, the statute speaks to renewal at the end of that term. I mean, it's certainly possible that the district could agree with the school to an extension, but the statute speaks to renewal.
Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. Okay, after listening to everybody speak and reviewing the Language and Literacy Academy for Learning's renewal application indicators and standards, it is my belief, and I'm one board member, but I'm going to say what I feel. If you look at the charter review team's recommendation to the board, the recommendation to approve with conditions was seven, and deny was one. If you go back and look at the contract recommendations based on years, they're all over the board. Looking at the actual focus areas in each of those, as far as meeting standards, approaching standards, does not meet, they've done okay. There's areas that have to be improved, and I think they're aware of that. So, in my personal opinion, we can debate this all night. I would like to see us, and I'd be willing to make the motion, to renew it for five years. And the reason being, and let me explain, not only for everybody who's here and for the kids. We, as the lead agency for these charter schools, we have the ability, if they do not perform, and it was mentioned tonight by several, I think even their attorney, and we've done it before, we have the ability to close them down. God forbid, please, I'm not advocating that, but we have a window. But if we don't give them the time that they need to properly address, I mean, my heart tugs for Annika, DJ, and the young man, the six-year-old boy that she didn't say what his name was. Michael, okay. So, all right, so for Annika, Michael, and DJ, dad gummit, we need to do this. It costs us nothing to give them the opportunity to move forward. And if you look at what we got, that's what your charter review committee was saying. Am I saying it's perfect? No. Are there issues in the focus areas? Absolutely. But I feel tonight, after listening to this group of people and their kids, as one eloquently said it, Ms. Leonard. Ms. Leonard said, "Where are they going to go in our schools?" And that kind of hit home. We don't have a place for them to go in our schools. They're serving a need. Is it perfect? No. But I feel like we need to move forward. So, that would be my personal recommendation, Superintendent Hyde. I'd be willing to make the motion. I don't know how you feel, but I tried to ask in board session, work session, and you said we would discuss it here. So, I'm bringing it up.
And I want to give other board members not particularly to speak.
Sure, absolutely.
And I'll share any concerns or thoughts that I have, but I want to give the floor to the board.
Mr. Nolte?
If you make the motion, I'll second it right now. I think it's great what you guys did.
The right thing to do. It's the right thing to do.
Well, so I'll interject at this point, then. I have no issue with the board making the motion. That's your authority. I will tell you, Superintendent, I will need to work with the school. There are concerns.
I understand.
There are concerns with certification of staff. There's concerns, and I recognize that we received a letter late yesterday. You received it almost immediately in the afternoon from my office, so that you would have it. Plus, we printed copies for you today, in case you did not look at your email, although all of you are very good at that. So, when they say they hired their staff and they're ESC certified, we have questions about when. I mean, we have the obligation, as the authorizer, and I want everybody to understand this, I have the obligation to then hold you accountable. And it will not, I will not have charter schools under me that fail and that turn around and aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing. And there are some concerns, and I don't disagree. That's why we wanted to do the extension. I don't think any of these things are unreparable, but we need to have more transparency. For example, I have a budget from your organization, but it does not list out identified or isolated positions by line item. It just simply lumps everyone into one category, which makes it very difficult for me. When we talked, somebody else spoke earlier about the number of speech pathologists that you've had and, you know, other services that you have. I can't see that in your budget, and I can't see some of those things. And so, and the location of the facility was in question until very recently. So, without a site, and what we were provided previously was just a blank copy of another lease agreement, and yet, it's my understanding that's not where you're going to land. And so, again, there has to be far more transparency between us so that we can establish trust, and auditing is part of that process. So, if the board moves forward and authorizes a five-year extension or a five-year renewal, please understand, I will work with them, and I will come back to the board, and I will provide you with an auditing timeline. It will not be specific to them. We need to be auditing all of our charter schools for compliance with all of the mandates and requirements. And that goes with everything from student medical records to everything else that's required. As the authorizer, I don't feel comfortable not having those systems in place, and so, we will be putting those in place. So, again, I'll support the board. If that's the directive of the board, more than happy to see another school function and flourish in our school district, but we will work hard together to make sure that that's the case. And if it's not, we'll be back here again.
Ms. Miller?
Thank you. And as someone who obviously represents the ESC community and having a 20-year-old nonverbal son who's been through the system, very transparent, I know Dr. Collins, as far as supporting the work there, this school is needed. There are some serious issues. There are serious financial issues. I'm not sure the attorney's approach would have been an approach I would have taken with the response here, because it's not nearly as detailed, and it's a little, in my opinion, it wasn't the most professional. Having a lender come to talk about how they want to lend money, I don't... The family spoke here, because the families desperately need this service, and that's the truth. That cannot negate the issues that we have. As far as outperforming our center schools in every category, that's not... We have so much information that's been given to us that the truth of it, the real facts are a little muddied at this point. An audit of the finances showed a negative fund balance. All of a sudden, there's a push of money to show a huge fund balance. As a person with a child with a disability, I get needing something, something is better than nothing, but we have to work with this school to make it better and to make it where it needs to be financially. I've seen a proposal of a lease agreement. I've seen, "We're going to buy a building." It's kind of been all over the place. References to Victory Ridge, the school does not run financially like Victory Ridge. They're in the middle of a $4.3 million construction project. They never, they only raise money for new projects. Pushing, the one thing that caught me, and this might have been an attorney who doesn't live in ESC world, but when you talk about fiscal stability and you list that you've moved kids' matrix scores, I'm, it's a red flag to me to see matrix scores from a 254 moved that many, 4 to 17, and flipping matrix scores of students to a 255 from 1 to 11. And if you don't live in the ESC world, you don't understand that. That's a funding mechanism. But that's not for fiscal stability. That's for providing services. And so, I'd like to know, and the superintendent can explain, what the measures... can explain, what the measures will be, that we can help work one-on-one with this school to help bring them where they need to be financially. Because if you work in advocacy, you're taught a long time ago to take the emotion out of advocacy. It's hard for me talking about my own child. If it was me talking about my Michael, I would be just as passionate. But as someone on the business end of this, and trying to make a business decision, and not a personal decision, I have a lot, a lot of concerns with the finances of this school. I have concerns about borrowing from hard money lenders. I have concerns about loans, when the state never stopped paying FTE, we're still having to borrow money to stay afloat. That's not happening in other charters. Administrative costs, your administrative costs are higher than, other than my superintendent, higher than every principal in my district running high schools with thousands of kids. That's a financial issue. You've had at least one teacher speak here tonight that I'm concerned with. Their state, their state records, because I happen to know the name when it came up. So, there's a lot of things that we need to partner with to help make the school better, and I want to know how we're going to do that. Because you can't go in and close a charter. That's not how the statute reads. So, we need to make sure that we're helping them, but we're also safeguarding students.
So, essentially, what I will provide for the Board is an outline, because in fairness to this organization, it needs to be the same process for every charter school. Now, actions can be triggered based off new information, and that's always a possibility. So, while the school, for example, I am accustomed to every charter school having annual audits. One year, it's an ESC compliance audit. The next year, it's service, support services audit. The next year, it's a medical compliance audit. Then, it's a financial audit. They have to turn in their financials each year. If we have questions, we ask them to provide further information. However, again, even if it's not their scheduled time for one of those audits, that traditionally would occur cyclical, just like we get audited as a school district, it can be triggered based off concerns or complaints that are filed at any time. And then, that's how it comes back before the Board. But in fairness to them, it needs to be an equitable process for all parties. And again, we will sit down, we'll map that out, we'll talk it through. They'll know exactly what's expected. It will mirror many of the same audits that we go through with the state, and as it should. We'll pull a sample number of student records and other information to make sure that they're in compliance. Where they're not, duly noted, right, just like our auditor does with financial audits of all of our schools. And so, yes, I've stated, for the record, there are some concerns. But, you know, again, the one-year extension or the renewal, because there wasn't a, the terminology of extension wasn't used in the statute, or allowed under statute, was to provide adequacy of time for them to address the concerns that we've outlined, without the feel or the pressure of non-renewal hovering over them. So, it's very clear, we have a lot of passionate parents who are here. No one's going to question a parent who wants to, you know, every one of us, as you know, I have a child in our system, every one of us wants to know that our child's flourishing. And each one of our children is different and unique, and because of that, we have choice options. So, we'll support those, but I'll work with the administration. We'll get a meeting scheduled relatively quickly, and I'll outline all of this for the Board. Because it needs to become part of our systematic process. Because what I'm concerned with, and the Board, you've seen this respectfully, you're seeing recommendations come back to you from a charter review committee that are all over the map. It's like to shot out a shotgun. And they don't make sense. And we need to be more explicit in some of these things. And I'm not taking away from what they do look at, but I think we need to look deeper, in a more meaningful way, at other things. And if we're doing annual reviews, and schools are getting glowing reports, by the time we get to renewal, it's done. The renewal is done. We've signed off on it, because we realize there's no issues at a school, and we can bring a long-term renewal forward. So, hopefully, that makes sense to the Board. So.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
I'm going to go to Mr. Sharpless, and let Board finish comments first. Mr. Sharpless?
First, just want to thank Dr. Collins for inviting me to her school. I appreciate you allowing me to walk through the halls, in the classrooms, and being, you know, just welcoming, as a new Board member, as a brand-new Board member. I ran on a platform of school choice. One of the, one of the things I frequently said on the campaign trail is that a student's educational opportunities should not be defined by their ZIP code. And what I mean by that is, as parents, you should be empowered to make the decision that you feel is best for your students. When it comes to this charter school and other charter schools, parents vote based on enrollment. You're voting, and you put your belief in a school system, in a school itself, whenever you enroll your students in that school. So, if you don't like the way the school is run, don't enroll. And that's just the free-market enterprise. And so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpless. Mr. Hyde, my question would be, and we just talked a little bit about this with the previous charter that we renewed, it's conveniently the exact same split on the contract term recommendations, with one for no contract, three for two years, and four for three years. Why would we not do the same recommendation as we did for them? What was the rationale between doing something differently than?
The one year?
So, doing the one year, instead of, so for the, before, when it was a three, one, four split, you did the five years.
I'm sorry if I didn't, if I wasn't clear earlier, and I'll state it again here. I felt strongly enough, the concerns that were duly noted, they were financial, they were academic in nature, they were structural. Quite frankly, you know, the lack of a facility was alarming. And to extend a renewal without having any certainty for that school, I'm not comfortable with that, quite frankly. And so, I made the decision as Superintendent, as I have the right to modify the recommendation from the committee. And so, we're here tonight. The Board wants, sees fit to extend that to a three to five. I'll honor that, and I'll work within those constraints. Because again, the goal here was not to create any hostility or animosity between us. It was to basically get some action on some items that we feel are desperately needed to be addressed.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. I am, I cannot get to a five-year. I'm comfortable with the two to three-year, and can get there, but just looking at all of the finances, especially even those that we've gotten as recently as today, have me very concerned about the trajectory. And the shorter time period just gives a little bit more time to do that, the audit process. So, that's where my comfort level is, but I am one Board member. It does not look like we have any more members in the queue to speak, if one, if someone would like to make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor, I believe, at this point.
Ms. Cunningham?
We do not. I haven't made the motion, but I will now. I'd like to make a motion, let's see, let me get my, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Language and Learning Academy for Learning Charter Renewal for five-year term.
Second?
Second. Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Fields, any discussion? Did you have further discussion, Ms. Cunningham? Mr. Nolte, did you have discussion?
No, I was seconding it, but I was blowing the draw.
Ms. Fields?
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
So, I am, I am very happy to hear Superintendent Hyde say that he needs to look at the process, and make sure that everyone is treated the same. Because I don't think that everyone is treated the same. And it's unfortunate, but I know that you want that to be the case. And I, it concerns me that we were all over the place, as you referenced, with recommendations. And I think that it's going to be very important that whoever comes before us for a charter school, to present us with a charter school application, or if they are renewing, that we provide them with the best level of support that we can, with the training, offering them the same training that we offer our other staff. I was told that we can't do that. Why? Why can't we invite them to our training? Is there something in statute that says that we can't? I don't know. That's not my area of expertise. I do know that the voices that we heard tonight, the voices, to me, are sincere voices, and they want what's best for kids, as we do. And everyone on this, this want what's best for kids. It's what we say. That's what our job is. And so, I am thankful, and I'm happy, that the motion is on the floor. Hopefully, everyone will support, and if you don't, that's on you. Can't do anything about that. But that we will give them the support that they need to be successful over the next, whatever years they get.
So, I'll address, there is no statutory limitation, as far as who can be included in trainings. This has been, and unfortunately, we've not had a good working relationship with our charter schools. We've not. And it goes back, we've had a great deal of animosity between us and the Lake Wales charter system.
A year.
And hurt feelings aside, you know, it's easy as an outsider coming in, I wasn't here, I didn't get my feelings hurt. Maybe I did earlier tonight, but you saw how that went for me. But I will say this, I mean, since that time, and since I've arrived, and I know that Ms. Cunningham will agree to this, and will support this, we've gone out of our way to reestablish relationship and a positive rapport with our charter schools, because at the end of the day, we have 117,200 students who attend schools in Polk County. They're not all Polk County public schools. I consider them Polk County public schools. But we still, we serve a community of 117,200 students, and growing. We'll probably grow another 9,000 kids this summer. That's just what's happening. Don't move to Davenport. But, you know, I feel committed to every child, and it's frustrating. I don't like seeing the complaints come through. I don't like seeing the allegations that are made, or hearing those may be made, you know, because change is difficult. But we are an organization that needs to change. We need to evolve. We need to become more child-centric. And right now, a lot of our systems, and our policies, and our practices do not support that. We say we do, but we don't. I watch time after time, when we tell parents, well, we have 90 days in which we can evaluate your child, knowing full well that if it was my child or your child, you would push as fast to get that child evaluated as quickly as possible. Why would we waste half a year waiting for a child to be evaluated? And again, but that's a procedural issue. It's a culture that's been created here, and we've been chasing ESC audit issues since 2007. We have some issues here. So, listen, we're as complicit as everyone else in a certain, to a certain regard, you know, and we're working on it, though. So, I'm as committed to making everybody else successful as we are. We need to have a good working relationship with our charter schools. It needs to be, it needs to be at arm's length, because at the end of the day, we are the accrediting body. You are the authorizing body. And you entrust me and everyone else, when it comes to time, to review their performance, and make sure that they're working up to par, in accordance with state statute and requirements, that they are. And it has to be a thorough process. But I don't disagree. I think it's time for us to revisit the process. And, you know, when I see opinions, they're so different on the charter review, and I'm not blaming them, and I hope nobody who's on that charter review committee is listening to the same thing, and I'm disparaging the work that they do, because that's a whole other task that they take on, beyond their duties and responsibilities to evaluate schools. But I think part of that is, we need to enhance our rubric, and our mechanism, and our practices, so that we can get a better measure, so that people feel more confident with their final recommendation. And I don't think it has anything to do with skill, or aptitude, or intelligence. I just think it's, we need to provide more guidance. And I don't disagree with you, Ms. Fields. If we have a training, and it has 100 seats available, and only 90 seats are filled, we have, we should be letting 10 more people in. I have to pay the trainer regardless. So, why are we not taking advantage of that? So, there's some opportunities for us here to grow, and to improve, and to do better as an organization. And, you know, but, and I will leave it, I want to wrap up with one last thing. You know, earlier this evening, I take a great deal of pride in what I do. I take, I have incredible pride, even if I've only been here 18 months in Polk County Public Schools. And I do take issue with rumor, and I do take issue with gossip, especially when no one's ever taken the opportunity to try and come to us and seek clarification. And so, knowing and hearing again tonight, well, community leaders are talking, the community's talking, not talking to us, I can assure you that, I haven't heard from one of them. And yet, I spend all this time responding to all these allegations and concerns, hours out of my day, to give you information, so that you can then defend these allegations in the community. Because let's be honest, they're not coming to us. And Ms. Fields and I have talked about this, why are people not coming forward with these allegations? I can't tell you why. But they're still just rumor and gossip. And so, I apologize to the Board, I apologize to the community. You know, if you felt that my comments earlier were not necessarily appropriate, I felt they were appropriate. I still feel that way. But I will apologize for my tone, and I will reach out. That gentleman and I have had conversations in the past, and I'll reach out, and we'll make amends. So, I just want to say thank you for that opportunity to clarify that this evening. But hopefully, Ms. Fields, I addressed your questions.
You did. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms. Miller?
I just want to address the fact of not working with charters. If you were here in the past, it has moved leaps and bounds to where we were. I can tell you, we had a charter that had a death at the school, and when they asked us for help with our psychologist, and I called and asked for help, I was told they have a three-ring binder, and that that's not what we do. But at the same time, we shipped people to Parkland to help that public school. We have come a long way, and we have a long way to go. That's how it's been here. I have more faith, and this is, because sometimes I say too much, I have more faith in the school at this time than it did with its predecessor. I feel like people are here that care about kids. We just have to work together. So, to come in and say, you know, we're going to abandon the school, or this is what people are saying, we're only hurting the community when you allow that to keep going. And then, to try to marry two subjects tonight, and community comment, I think was, just wasn't, their goal wasn't reached. It actually made it more difficult. Being in the ESC community, understanding what we're trying to do here, and we hired Mr. Hyde to move this district forward, and change was going to happen. But if you're hearing things, you need to come to the source. I think it's helpful for everyone. I think it's time that we partner. You know, being concerned about financials, I'm concerned with a lot of charter schools' financials. But here where we are with HB1, I can't do anything about private schools that are, that are going to have tax dollars running through this, these, running through tax dollars without any kind of oversight. There is somewhat oversight of our charter schools. And we can partner with charter schools to make sure kids' needs are being met. But we have to do that. So, I need to hear, before I make, before I vote, I need to hear from the Superintendent what it looks like, because I haven't experienced this before, going into charters, and helping them, whether it's, the word audit is so, it's punitive. But what are we, what will we do to help them with this budgetary issue that I, that we keep reading about, depending on what document's in front of you? Like, is this going to be something that's done annually? Is it going to be something that's, how will we know what we can do to help them? I've never been through the process with another charter.
With the number of charter schools we have, it's going to be, so there's a cycle of audits that would take place. Think about our school district. We get an ESC audit, we get an ELL audit, we get a financial audit, we get a transportation audit, we get a food services audit. So, just use those five as the example. Essentially, they would be assigned, all charter schools would be assigned similar audits. Obviously, not food service, but we talked about ELL services, ESC services, financial auditing, and their academic performance. So, that would be put on an annual cycle. There's no way to perform all those audits at, in one year, because of the number of charter schools we have. But each school would be placed on a different auditing cycle. So, while one's being audited for financial appropriateness, you know, five of them may be getting audited for financials, while another five are being audited for their academic performance. Hopefully, that makes sense. That way, I can send teams out to perform this service, and to work with them. Now, they would be given a list of all the things that we're looking for, because prior to our arrival, we would expect them to be able to support the audit, and have staff there that can answer the questions that need to be answered. On a financial side, I think some of that, there's a lot of clarification needs to happen, because I was a little concerned in the attorney's response, that you spent down fund balance to address some other issues. And I want to make sure that that didn't create hardship elsewhere. So, I just, I think we need to spend some time just talking through that. So, financial audit is probably the place we need to begin with. We'll do a, we'll talk to you about what that might look like, also about your facility. I think those are the two primary concerns right now. And then, we'll get to staffing and those other areas. And it sounds like, quite honestly, you have the support you need to answer the questions that we have. So, it should be a really, relatively quick process. The auditing does not take multiple days. You know, we're not going to pull, you have 300 students. We typically pull a percentage of the student files to look at and to review, to make sure that they're receiving the services, and that all the documentation is there, so that, as you're seeking reimbursement for certain, like, speech language, right, we want to make sure that you're getting reimbursed, but that all of the documentation is there to justify that said reimbursement. And so, I think that's part of the process. So, I don't know, without having it fully delineated in front of me, and I can pull what I've done previously, and provide that to the Board. Now, obviously, I'm going to have to convert it to Florida standards, but it's easily done.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
It says one year still on the, on our.
Not what I, that wasn't my motion.
Just want to make sure.
The motion was edited.
Okay.
Q5, name selection for new elementary school, 21C. And I'll seek a motion to approve the recommended name for 21C, which I believe is South Point Elementary.
Move to approve.
Second?
Ms. Dave. They were so excited to show you all the graphics and everything.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Hold on just a second, we'll get to discussion. So, we have Mr. Sharpless and So we have Mr. Sharpless and Ms. Cunningham, and now we'll open it for discussion. Ms. Nave, do you want to talk about 21C?
Yes, she does.
Yes, I do. Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Wyatt, Board Members, Superintendent Hyde, Mr. Bridges. The naming committee for C-21 began meeting this past September to explore options for a name that would reflect the Winter Haven community, as well as honor the surrounding area. We were very fortunate to have a diverse group of members selected to be on the committee, including Board Member Justin Sharpless, T. Michael Stavris, who is our Winter Haven City Manager, Bob Gernhardt, Director of the Museum of Winter Haven and also local historian, Steve Christman, CFO of Six Ten Corporation and also a local youth minister, also Polk County Public School Board employees Jennifer Farrell, Joshua McLemore, and myself. I would like to thank all the members who spent their time researching history and looking into appropriate name selections. The committee met four times and discussed several options and agreed on the following, as you know, Osprey Elementary, Osprey Landing, Sensibah Elementary, and South Point Elementary. We want to thank Jason Geary and his team. They designed a great survey and promoted the survey through automated telephone calls and emails, the district's Community E-Newsletter, district's social media, such as Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, district and school websites, and news, news, excuse me, news releases to local media. We were very pleased with receiving over 5,600 votes. The attachment that you have before you will show the breakdown by percentages and number of responses. As you can see, that South Point Elementary had the highest response of 38%. A unique idea that was presented to us was to be able to use the Osprey name as the school mascot, Osprey Landing being the informal name of the patio outside of the cafeteria, and possibly naming the media center after Mrs. Sensibah. So once the school is established, we might be bringing that to you further for a recommendation to name the media center after Ms. Effie Sensibah. So the naming committee really liked that suggestion of being able to use all of those options within the school and was very supportive. So thank you for considering the proposed name of South Point Elementary as presented to you by the C-21 Naming Committee. And at this time, I would like to share our newly named principal of C-21, Mr. Dart Myers, to share with you our potential branding ideas that have been created with Mr. Myers and our fabulous Public Relations Department.
School Board, Mr. Hyde, but it's an exciting process at this point, because things start moving a little forward with websites and Facebook and get things promoting out there. But, yeah, working with Jason Geary and Nathan and Jordan out of Public Relations, they have the hard copy, working on some branding ideas, so they came with a clean, professional, crisp mascot there, using like the Osprey, if that's potentially what goes forward, as well as the colors from the school, colors, the color board from the schools. And then just even coming out line, I would fit different branding options there, kind of showing like banners or a pin or shirts, thinking about what goes on to a polo, what goes on to an Oxford style, as well as looking at, never known, a few years, we had to expand, go K8, it's also a design that would meet the middle school level kids, as well as elementary for that, so. And to me, I like the unique perspective of utilizing all four names, incorporate from there. South Point Elementary, Ospreys would be the only one in Polk County with Osprey as a mascot, if that's where we go forward with that. And then being able to use the teacher for Polk County, that Sensibah, and then even using the Osprey Landing, we do have outdoor patio area. If you're familiar with Willow Oak or Bella Steed, do they have the same build, they have that patio area out there, kind of works incorporating all there, so those are the ideas there, and thank you for the time and your consideration.
We did, Board Members, we did ask the school and the staff to withhold Sensibah at this time, until such time as they actually have a SAC committee and they can bring that forward formally. But we too love the idea of utilizing all the recommendations, and I think they did a great job, and as he stated, this is the first Osprey in the entire school district.
Yay! Awesome.
That's pretty cool.
Awesome.
Any questions? I'm, sorry, Madam Chair, it's yours.
You want to take the meeting out?
No, ma'am.
Hand you the guy. Mr. Sharpless.
Just want to say, it was my honor to serve on the naming committee. I can also tell you, in addition, the, the committee was excited about incorporating all those options, but also, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure it was a unanimous vote from the committee to, for this name, so I want that to be clear. And I'm really looking forward to representing South Point Elementary.
All right.
Very nice.
I was so excited about your comments, I forgot my, Ms. Miller.
I just want to say, yeah, I think this looks great. Isn't University of North Florida Ospreys? And they're going to, they swoosh, are y'all going to have a similar? That's their call, yeah.
Can you illustrate that for us?
They all, that's what the kids do, they all swish, that's their thing. Okay, I'm going to come down to see you swish. Thank you.
Dr. Allen.
Yeah, I just wanted to commend the work as well on this. The green, if we think about the green room from a theatrical standpoint, it's got this very soothing sense to it, and then the blue has tinges of royalty as well, and then the sans serif based font has a very modernized feel to it, which really connects well with our middle schoolers, but in general, you know, I mean, I love the design patterns and well done.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. I can't wait for our pencil fact later.
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. All right, and Q6, thank you all for coming. Q6 will be the attendance boundary committee. Ms. Miller, do you have a motion to approve Bonnie Evans to fill open position on the attendance boundary committee?
I am so excited to make the motion to approve Ms. Bonnie Evans to serve on the attendance boundary committee, representing District 7 proudly.
Second.
Ms. Miller and Mr. Sharpless, any discussion? Ms. Miller, would you like us to, would you like to tell us about Ms. Evans?
Thanks so much, Chair Wyatt. Bonnie Evans is an owner and operator of All American Furniture and Mattress since 1982. She works with her husband on the Evans Family Ranch in North Lakeland, and us North Lakelanders know that road, Evans Ranch Road out there. Bonnie is married to Perry and is a mom of two daughters, Brittany and Paxton. Paxton's one of our teachers at Lake Gibson, she's the ag teacher, and she has two grandchildren. She's a board member of the Central Florida Youth and Agriculture. She is also a steer committee member for the Polk County Youth Fair, treasurer of Lake Gibson Athletic Booster Club, and serves on the Business Agricultural Academic Academies at Lake Gibson High School. She's a member of the Lakes Church and enjoys competing in local barbecue competitions with her husband. She is very dedicated to our schools. If you go to any of the Lake Gibson games, you will probably see Bonnie there. That's how I met her in the booster tent. I think she'll be a great addition to the ABC Committee and represent the Lake Gibson and District 7 areas.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Mr. Sharpless.
I just want to take a second. When I saw this on the agenda, I was very happy, because I know Ms. Evans personally from her participation in the Polk County Youth Fair. She's a woman of integrity, and I think she will represent District 7 well on the, on the attendance boundary committee.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpless. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Next, we'll go to our superintendent's report.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. The next work session will be held on April 11th, 2023. The work session will begin at 9:00 a.m. sharp, and the meeting will be held at the district office located at 1915 South Florida Avenue in Bartow, Florida.
Thank you, Superintendent Hyde. Now we'll go to our attorney's report. Mr. Bridges.
The school board authorized participation in a mass tort litigation, a class action, if you will, against Juul and the Tobacco Vaping Company and others. There were approximately 1,500 party plaintiffs in that, and the attorneys in that action have negotiated a settlement, which they are recommending to you. The total value of the gross settlement to the school board of Polk County will be $2,498,406, less attorney's fees and costs. And if a sufficient number of plaintiffs approve this, there's the possibility of an additional bonus payment, I believe up to 8.1%. So that is brought to you with a recommendation for approval. To my knowledge, all, all the other districts in Florida that have participated and have voted thus far have approved the settlement as recommended.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges.
And if you, if you'd like, I can, I can read the, the motions to make it easy for someone to say so, move. The motion would be to approve and accept the proposed class action litigation settlement in the matter of the School Board of Polk County, Florida versus Juul Labs, Inc., formerly known as Pax Labs, Inc., James Monces, Adam Bowen, Nicholas Pritzker, Hyung He, Riaz Valani, Altria Group, Inc., Altria Client Services, LLC, Altria Group Distribution Company, and Philip Morris USA, Inc., for the gross amount of $2 million.
How you think these dollars...
Yes, ma'am, I can tell you now what I, I believe the money should be spent on vape detection devices in our middle schools and our high schools, and vape and anti-drug educational programs, tobacco cessation. We've talked about this before as a school district. We want to expand those clubs on our, on our high school campuses, but I think that that $2 million would be well served, providing the support, supports in those areas. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I believe one of the ladies has the originals for your signature, and if, if we might arrange for you to sign those before you leave, I will get them shipped out tomorrow. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. Board member reports. We'll go to Ms. Cunningham first.
Okay. Thank you so much. I just have a short report. On February 3rd, 2023, I attended my very first topping out party in all of my 18 years of serving on the Polk County School Board. With the incredible growth that we are experiencing in Northeast Polk, I was very enthusiastic when I was approached about considering an innovative public-private partnership to build new schools. With state funding continuously being eroded, this option was something that I felt we needed to explore. After much discussion with Superintendent Hyde and district staff, my fellow colleagues on the board and I voted to approve this public-private partnership with Public Schools Development Solutions and Building Tomorrow's Schools. I was most impressed with the proposed timeline for building the K8 school, as well as the financing structure. Additionally, this new school will allow us to have seat availability as the new homes being built throughout the northeast area of Polk County, bringing new families and their students to our community schools. I was honored to celebrate this incredible milestone, which I believe is the first of its kind in Polk County and most probably in the state of Florida. I am confident that this partnership will be a model for delivering the highest quality educational facilities that benefit the taxpayers and provide an exemplary learning environment for the students in our community. Thank you to all involved as we blaze new trails in public education. This new K8 school is located at 2,700 State Road 17 in Haynes City. It is scheduled to open in August of 2023, and we commonly call it, it's not been named yet, but Scenic Terrace K8. So just want to do a shout out to all those involved. This was one of those, we kind of get, kind of got to get out of our comfort zone and do what we think is best for kids and families, and we took the leap of faith, and I think we're going to pay great dividends to our community. So I just wanted to give Public School Development Solutions and Building Tomorrow's Schools a kudos and a shout out tonight to thank them, because I think this is going to be a brand new, wonderful partnership with them. That concludes my report. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. Mr. Nolte.
Here's my Cliff Note report. Since I've only been around for four months, it's been a really exciting learning situation. Thank you, people, for attending tonight, and thank you for backing us up and giving us some good ideas to go forward with. The half-cent group I met with, I actually knew a couple guys in there that were golfers, and we definitely need that half-cent to carry on, and hopefully, when it expires, we can get another half-cent or so, because we definitely need it. Then I attended last week up in Tallahassee, and I did not know it was Hillhilly up there. If I did, I would have probably tried to borrow my son's skateboard, but anyway, it would have been good for downhill. But Wendy Dodd, just, she does a terrific job for the county, so kudos to her. She just super sharp, knew exactly where to go, who to talk to. Also attended with, with Justin, Lisa, Dr. William, Sarah Beth, and watching them perform and talk to the people, I really enjoyed it. I can't say what a great job you did, and thanks for letting me tag along. Look forward to many more meetings like that, and hopefully, it'll be productive, and hopefully can get those six generators or so. Again, I really feel blessed to be here and hope to make a difference, and thank you, Superintendent Hyde, and thank you, Sarah Beth, the great job you do, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Nolte. Ms. Fields.
It's getting late in the evening, and I am going to save my report for next month.
Thank you, Ms. Fields.
You're welcome.
Dr. Allen.
Oh, man. I do have a few things. Ms. Andrea, thanks for hanging out the whole meeting this evening. A great opportunity to recognize Crystal Lake Community Partnership School, so I really appreciate the work that you're doing there. Board Members, as you looked at that information, and if you go back to the words during our recognitions, only 15 schools in the state of Florida. So, you know, and I was just reflecting on a brief conversation that we had during the spring fling, and as you were discussing your longtime involvement with the Child Abuse Prevention Month, and as you were there in regards to the proclamation, and what I heard from that conversation with you was, initially, what the proclamation said was full of a lot of stats and a lot of problems, and you wanted it modified to address a sense of hopefulness. And I see that in you and the way that you're pouring into our students at Crystal Lake Elementary. That is education. It's a pillar of hope, so thank you for what you do. Just had an opportunity to go around to different campuses and take part in some cleanup, so the next time, if you get an opportunity to visit our Bruce Wagner, they do have this amazing chicken coop, and went from like this tiny house to a mansion. I am telling you, this is a mansion of a chicken coop. So Ms. Von Loi, a teacher there, her husband, expert builder, Ms. Jakes, just several other parents involved in that process, they're just doing some great things on that campus. Did have a chance to step into a kindergarten class, oh my goodness, it's a lot different than teaching college students, as I was serving with junior achievement, but just incredible, I was so incredibly impressed with the finance curriculum that was shared at the kindergarten level. I mean, choice, money, needs, wants, goods, services, banks, and savings, and man, those students, and this is an IB program, they were killing it. They were so brilliant. Really thoroughly enjoyed it, though. And then speaking of JA, I was at Tenner Rock on last Friday, and we had a student panel, and just a couple statements that I heard from the students. "I went from a silent, troubled young lady to someone who loves to communicate ideas." Another statement, "3DE has helped improve my motivation and taken me out of my comfort zone." "3DE has allowed me to take pride in what I am saying." Wow, pretty awesome. So incredible things happening around the district. Thanks, thanks to Superintendent Hyde for representing, in your comments, by the way, in Tallahassee last week, all of Florida schools as it relates to the House Bill appropriation, which I hope that we get, rather than the Senate. And in that, Chair Josie Tomco, thank you, thank you, thank you. Let's bring that budget home to Polk. If you want to do some more research on that, March 22nd, the meeting packet will really deliver what's in that House Bill appropriation. Now, to end with my pencil facts for you this evening, so take these home with you. The average pencil, did you know, the average pencil, and I do have an average pencil with me that I sharpen by hand today, this is the Blackwing 602, and the tag on it says, "Half the pressure, twice the speed." So the average pencil can write 45,000 words, did you know that? And then... And then, before erasers were introduced, people would use breadcrumbs to erase their mistakes. Did you know that? Madam Chair, that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Dr. Allen, I always learn something new from you and your pencil. I would love to know how many words your large pencil that you make us carry around Tallahassee can write. We'll save that for the next fun fact. Mr. Sharpless?
So I have a lot of things I want to say, but I'm going to take Ms. Fields' lead, and I'm going to, I'm only going to discuss one event, one accomplishment. I'm really proud of Lake Region High School, in particular, their culinary students, as well as their culinary teacher, Corinne Hart. They went up to Universal Orlando in a cooking competition, and they won it. And so we sell, I also like, like to see what the national championship Bartow brought home, but I want to make sure District Six is represented in our career tech education programs, and congratulations to the culinary students and to the teacher for winning the Universal Orlando event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpless. Ms. Miller?
Thanks. I'll, I'll try to be quick. It's hard for me. Tallahassee was obviously a good time to go and be heard. We met with Commissioner Diaz, and you know, he had a lot of tough questions, but I reminded him that Polk County is doing it well, and, and he can visit, and others can come at any time. And I think that was, it was good for them to hear from us, but it was also great for us to go and have that experience. So I appreciate Wendy being the tour guide that, for those evenings that we were with her. On last Saturday, the Kiwanis of Lakeland had Day Without Disabilities at the Bunch Family Ranch, and what makes it important to education is that on a Saturday from about 9:00 a.m. to 3:00, you had kids from Summerlin, you had kids from, one as far as Davenport from Ridge way out there, we had kids from all of the key clubs. Winter Haven High School's phenomenal key club, and their teacher came to volunteer their time to make sure kids were having fun on the farm that have disabilities and to work next to them as their peers, walk beside them with horses, help them with art projects. We have some great kids, so don't listen to the hype about the young people right now. We have some kids that are going to do amazing things, and I see them at work all the time. But on Saturday, it was very inspiring to see them really volunteering their private time to help others. So I was, it was glad, I was glad to see them. I got to go into a kindergarten classroom, which I used to teach, so I understand, I was a lot younger back then, WA, it was very different, and I don't know that I could do it again, but Wendell Watson was doing a phenomenal job, and I got to see Ms. Kraus' room with their individual devices, which I've been a little concerned about with kindergarten, but they had fun hand motions, they knew where to go, picked them up, they knew how to interact with them appropriately. It was really great to see them using their finger to follow words on their device, so they could read, kindergartners were reading. It was a great day. So if you haven't been in a kindergarten classroom, I hope you'll come and visit one of ours. They're pretty exciting. But that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And I will very briefly, several of my colleagues mentioned going to Tallahassee. Wendy Dodge is incredible at her craft, and I don't think she gets enough credit. Every other district up there realized, I think, this time, is we had lots and lots of meetings and a very full schedule, and several other districts did not have lots of meetings or a full schedule, just how impactful having Wendy Dodge up there is. So we typically rave about her when she's not here to hear us during session, but I do want to make sure that we recognize her when she gets back as well, because she is a gem, and we need to keep her forever. That being said, we will now go to public comments. As a reminder, this is our second opportunity for public comments tonight, and these are for items not on the agenda. To speak at this time, community members must have filled out a speaker card in the lobby prior to the meeting. All speakers will be given three minutes. The light will turn yellow when you have one minute left, and you will hear a beep when your time is concluded. Please note that although the board encourages community participation, no immediate, immediate action will be taken on items presented during this public comment portion of the meeting. If follow-up board action is required, then the matter may be placed on the, on the agenda at a subsequent meeting in order, in accordance with school board policy. So first, we have Michelle Giampiola?
Giampola.
Giampola. I was close. And then on deck, we have Bernard Wells. Thank you. And if you can pull down the mic just a little bit. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. So tonight, I wanted to speak with you all about something that's very important in our school system right now, and it's bullying. And while I speak, I want you to remember two words, zero tolerance. Our daughter Carly, who is here tonight, has experienced bullying in two schools in her two years of middle school so far. Her first school, Jewett Middle Academy, pushed everything that happened to her under the rug. She experienced physical violence there from other children, including slapping her on the behind, jumping on her back, trying to strangle her with her own lanyard, verbally bullying her, threatening to beat her up, admitting it to the dean, and nothing was done. Nothing. In fact, the social worker didn't even know about it until three months later, when I brought it to her attention. We eventually moved Carly out of that school on Hope Scholarship the last six to seven weeks of her sixth grade school year, and she now goes to Dennison Middle, and she is in the Cambridge program. Her first week there, she began getting bullied, teased, threatened, and it's continued through this year. We were offered the Hope Scholarship again, but why should we move our kid again? And where are we going to move her? Bullies should be removed from the school. I wrote a big, long email. I sent it to our Commissioner of Education, our governor, local school administration, Bullying Compliance Office, our county commissioners, Superintendent Hyde, Ms. Wyatt, Colleen Burton, and Sam Killebrew, and I received almost no response back. I ask you, what am I supposed to do to keep my child safe at school? What measures are you going to put in place so this behavior stops? I know some of this is just middle school girls being mean, but being in middle school should not give you a free pass to bully others. Per the National Center for Education Statistics in 2019, 20% of middle and high school students report bullying every year, with the highest percentage in sixth grade at 29%. According to the Academy, American Academy of Pediatrics, suicide is now the second-leading cause of death in adolescents in the United States, and the suicide rate for middle school-aged girls has increased dramatically. Students who are bullied are nearly two times more likely to attempt to take their own life, and we refuse to let our daughter be part of these statistics. Sure, Polk County has policies against bullying, but these policies aren't being enforced. And what are we doing to protect the victims from retaliation when the bullies are punished, if they ever get punished? There needs to be change. Our first priority is our daughter. Please just let me finish. Our first priority is our daughter, but our second priority is policy change and zero tolerance. They cannot, bullying cannot be tolerated. The sequence of consequences for bullying must be different than just dress code infractions. You can't just say, oh, well, let's just give you ISS, or let's just suspend you. When you bully, that's got to be enough of a consequence the first time, so it does not happen the second time. Our daughter is terrified to go to school. She has been physically assaulted, she has been intimidated, she has been teased, threatened, she has been cyberbullied, and I have gone to even Mr. Wiggs, who is right up under the superintendent, and I told him about these things, and he didn't see that there was a problem. Somebody told Carly that if she, if there was a school shooting, they would push her out so that she would get hit, because if she got hit, nobody would care.
And he didn't see a problem with that?
He did not see a problem with that.
Thank you.
Those are his words.
Yes. Those are his words.
And I believe Superintendent Hyde, you've had, do you have staff that have reached out or that can reach out?
So, yes, ma'am. Actually, this was forwarded to staff on February 23rd. When the email came to us for follow-up by the regional, I did ask if we had any regionals still here. We do not, so I'll be sure that we do some follow-up tomorrow morning. Will not be Mr. Wiggs, it'll be Brett Butler or anyone else, still look to see if any bullying reports have been submitted. But I will clarify, bullying is ongoing and persistent, and it's, it's a demonstration where somebody's asserting a power over, an influence over another. Poor behaviors that are isolated are not bullying. They're bad behavior, and so we're more than happy to address these issues, but far often, far more often than not, there's a misconception about those two things. And so I will be happy to have someone meet with you, review what the circumstances of what's transpired to date, look at what's been documented, and make sure that they've taken the appropriate action.
Sir, poor behavior does not include threatening violence on a child on a daily basis. It doesn't include.
I agree. I agree.
There are no consequences happening at the school. They are pushing it under the rug because nobody is looking at it. When you, we reserve zero tolerance for the most severe things, don't we? Gun violence, homicide, we have zero tolerance for that. We have a zero tolerance bully, but that is not the case. The case is 100% tolerant for the bullies. They are the ones being protected.
We'll, we'll, I'll be happy to have staff follow-up with you in the morning.
We'll have staff follow-up with you in the morning. Thank you. Bernard Wells, and on deck is Monica Williams.
Let me just again, Bernard Wells here. And I want to respond to a recent article in the Lakeland Now. I have three points to make. Number one, it appears to be a lack of knowledge about the statute concerning initial evaluation timeline, but a second time in recent months, a misquote to the public has been given. In the article, it was stated that a 60-day, to be 60 school days, and in fact, it is 60 calendar days with the exception of approved school closure, excuse me, as determined by the district-approved calendar. However, this basic information seemed to escape the knowledge of the current ESE leadership and other so-called ESE expert. Point number two, Mr. Hyde appointed Tammy Castles to the Assistant Superintendent of Learning Support of Polk County in June of '22, while her previous school district, Sarasota County, was embroiled in a major lawsuit with parents for illegally placing students with disability into an intellectual disability program where students did not have a severe cognitive disability. This Learning Support Division leader is now over Polk County ESE. Ms. Castle's appointment was soon followed by the hiring of her husband, Curtis Williams, to the director, to director in Human Resources. The definition of nepotism is the practice among those with power or influence of favoring relatives, friends, or associates, especially by giving them jobs. Mr. Hyde has created a culture in his district that approves of nepotism, as he knew both Castle and Williams prior to being selected as Polk Superintendent.
That's false.
Nepotism is alive and well, and he has created a toxic culture that is not only present in the ESE department. Mentioning Ms. Taylor, point three, EEOC complaint in the Lakeland Now article as part of the reorganization of the ESE department is liken, is likened to an attempt to keep Ms. Taylor from pursuing her job opportunities in this state in her expertise. To use your status as superintendent to degrade a well-respected African-American employee is none less, is nothing less than loathsome, repugnant, and very unbecoming of a sitting superintendent. We, the public, can see where you have taken the hard work of a previous Assistant Superintendent of Learning Service, Dr. Joshua Love, and Ms. Taylor, and credited to your person, Tammy Castle. In fact, the plan was given to her, and I suspect that the chief academic officer was involved. I'm sure a public records can reveal communication with Ms. Castle outlining the reorganization plan handed to her to present as her own. To, sir?
I don't get the extra time.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Monica Williams?
So it's allowed for certain people?
You, your time is done. Monica Williams? I believe she left already. All right. Seeing no further business to come before the board, this meeting is adjourned.